It does. Okay, there you go. You're on a live on Facebook.
All right, I would like to call to order the public hearing on school choice. On Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, at 6:50 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Hi, Jen Madden. I mean, President Jen Madden.
President Ashley Colery.
President Ellen Marr. So we have a quorum. So the law requires that the school committee each year holds a public hearing on school choice. And school choice is a benefit in the state of Massachusetts. All children who live in Massachusetts are entitled to attend a public school free of charge. And all children between the ages of six and 16 must attend school. Most children attend school in their home district, which is the school district in which they live. In certain situations, parents may choose to enroll children in public schools outside of their home district. These choices include the inter-district school choice option, charter schools, vocational, technical schools, the MECO program, the Massachusetts Virtual Academy and the Massachusetts Academy of Math and Science at Worcester Polytechnic Institute. Parents may also choose to educate their children in non-public settings through private schools or homeschooling. This advisory provides information and links. It's on the DSCY website on school choice. So basically, and Michael, you can jump in if I misspeak. What we're voting on is whether to make Cohasset a school choice district, meaning that children from other towns can enroll in Cohasset. Children in Cohasset can enroll in other districts that already have school choice. So that doesn't, children going out doesn't require a vote. It's whether or not we open up the district to children from other towns, other than their hometown. So this is a hearing. We have to take a vote on it. Everybody received the list of the districts that are school choice and not. It can be by grade level. It can be by building level. Once it's established that a district has authorized, say, first grade, any child who enrolls in that district through school choice is entitled to stay in the district through the balance of their schooling, even if the upper-level grades are not open to school choice. So that prevents a student from getting kicked out of a district which they have now made their home district. Michael, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what's the remuneration on a per pupil? Sorry.
Keep talking. I can maybe find out. I don't know.
The sending district compensates the receiving district a certain amount. Has no, I don't believe it has any, it has any relationship to the district's actual per-student spending. I think it's a formula.
Yeah.
I want to say it's up to like $5,000 or $6,000 if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I believe the last time I looked, it was that much.
I did some research this week on it.
You're so good.
I'm sorry, Ashley.
I said, "That sounds right to me." I did some research this week on it. And I also found that there are not, I didn't see school districts in this area that are open to outside placements for this.
It says, "The regular day school choice tuition rate is $5,000 per student for school districts and $8,572 per student for Commonwealth Virtual Schools."
You're right. You're right, Ashley. There aren't, you know, any, any local districts really. Carver does accept school choice.
Needham.
Needham does, yeah.
Acton, maybe?
Acton.
It's like a sprinkling kind of.
Right, right. Yeah. Hall does not. Hangum does not. So, yeah, it's, I think it, I think it's pertinent to, you know, districts that, you know, might have a lot of space between them. Or although, I didn't sort this geographically, so actually, I shouldn't say that. But, you know, we have had districts on the South Shore recently. Abington used to be, they're not anymore. Rockland, I believe, is a school choice district. And... So, so it does happen. So if there isn't any further deliberation, you know, I think, I think at this time, with our enrollment projections being very steady and consistent that Michael has done in our budget, it doesn't appear like we would want to shore up any enrollment. Sometimes districts do it if they see a massive drop. Say if kindergarten registration went from 80 to 60, and they were tracking 60 throughout that grade, they might want to open it up to school choice to kind of balance out. But I don't see any logistical or financial reason for us to, to do it. That's my opinion. Anyone else? Jen, I can't hear you.
I agree with you, Ellen. I don't see a reason, and particularly given the circumstances of the year we're about to start, I think it would be unwise.
Okay. Ashley, any other comment?
I don't have another comment. I did, I mean, from, from my perspective, it would be like, the, the benefit would be to add to the student population. And I think we have a wonderful community from Boston that comes to the district. And I feel like, so I do feel like we should sort of, if there's some desire for us to emphasize sort of creating a very inclusive environment that includes students that don't necessarily live in Cohasset, I feel like we're, we're working towards that with our MECO family.
Yes, and, and I think, you know, we're, we're capped presently at the number of MECO students we have. To me, an interesting project would be, how do we increase the cap? And what is the cost benefit of that? I think if, if you're a school choice district and a student applies and meets the academic credentials for the grade level, there's no saying you, you have to accept them. You know, it's not like a private school where you can accept or deny the application.
Correct. Yeah. I would rather look at ways we can improve or expand upon, I should say, the MECO experience if we're going to find that we have the ability to accommodate additional students in the district that don't already live here.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion to designate Cohasset Public Schools as a non-school choice receiving district?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Jen Madden.
And I, Ellen Marr. Thank you. I'm just making notes. School choice, okay. So it is 6:58. And, Michael, there's no comments coming in? Public comments? I don't, I don't actually, oh, Q and A, there's nothing?
No.
Okay, okay. Excellent. So we can move on to the regularly scheduled Cohasset School Committee meeting of Wednesday, May 20th. And it is 6:59 PM. And I'd like to have a call to order. And a roll call, please.
President Paul Kearney.
President Ashley Colery.
President Jen Madden.
President Ellen Marr. Okay. This meeting is being streamed live on 143T and on Facebook Cohasset 143, and it's also being recorded. And I would just like to read, since this is our first livestream with the ability for public comment, some guidelines that were put out by the town. So while participation in Cohasset public meetings, we request you follow these basic best practices. These practices include connecting to meetings by using your web browser, Google Chrome, or another browser. And additionally, you can download and install the Zoom app. When connecting to Cohasset virtual meetings, you'll have the opportunity to communicate questions to the board or the committee chair via the Zoom Q and A communication pane found in the Zoom meeting portal. If you experience technical issues while entering or while you're within the meeting, you can raise your virtual hand from the menu for assistance by the host or the co-host. Those individuals connecting via a phone will only be able to listen to the meeting and not interact with the meeting unless the host allows for audio questions to be submitted. When signing into a Cohasset public meeting, we request you utilize your first and last name, followed by your street address. This will allow the host or the board chair to acknowledge you by name when reading questions and answering those questions submitted. Additionally, by utilizing your computer or device browser, you can view any documents or information shared within the meeting via the host or the chair sharing their document, presentation, or desktop. Phone calls will not be able to view this level of meeting business information. Additional information may be found in the meeting agenda posting, Facebook streaming page, and/or on the website for Cohasset Public Schools as to the requirements for attending a meeting as an attendee. Best practices suggest a good internet connection. If you're a panelist, a good quality microphone is suggested, and possibly a noise-canceling headset for best audio listening. Attendees can submit questions via the Q and A chat window within Zoom. All questions will be reviewed and addressed in a way the board chair feels adequate. Off-point questions may be dismissed without acknowledgement. And attendees will see all and any questions once they are answered. All of these meetings are recorded for accuracy per the open meeting law. By joining these meetings, you can send to these recordings, including all dialogue that occurs either verbally or through the Q and A question and response options. So we will be taking public questions by topic area. As you can see on the agenda, we don't have a public comment. But as we go through, if we see questions pop up, I will read the question, assuming it has a name and address, and direct it to the appropriate person for a response. If there are multiple questions on the same topic or asking the exact same thing, I'll indicate that. So as we don't read each question and respond to each question, which would be redundant. So that being said, does any of the committee have any questions on this?
No.
No. Okay, all right, thank you. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Ellen, and thank you, school committee. It's good to be back here in virtual Cohasset land. It's been a, certainly a week of planning, a couple of weeks of planning as we continue to refine our remote learning plan. This week, we met as a leadership team to firm up our plans for the return of student belongings. That has been communicated to staff. It involves staff coming in in a social distancing fashion to get their rooms free of student belongings, the bagging of all the belongings. And then, of course, delivery dates, which, well, I should say, pickup dates, which have been set for June 8th through the 11th with a rain date of the 12th. So that was, took a lot of planning, and we're ready to do it. And I think it's going to go very efficiently. This week was marked by some beautiful banners. You'll hear more about this when we talk about our senior events. But beautiful banners placed in the center of town that show our amazing senior class. Beautiful pictures. It's a, it's a great tribute to them. If you happen to be driving by the town common, you can't miss them. I was lucky enough to be there to hammer in a few sticks. But the group that was working there were wonderful, and it was a real collaborative effort. And as part of our thinking and planning, we had a very productive student, superintendent student advisory council meeting. Those students have been wonderful. I was saying at the end of the meeting to them how proud the students make me on that team to be part of Cohasset and part of the Cohasset community. They were thoughtful, energizing to me. And all of their comments go not only directly to you, but directly to my leadership team as we think about and plan for our events to come. This particular student advisory council meeting talked about what school might look like going into the fall. And of course, right now, we don't have those guidelines from the state. I did send out a planning document to our staff and to the parents, to the families, I should say, of Cohasset, talking about our infrastructure for setting up and being ready for when we get that guidance. And I talked about having subcommittees of elementary instructional planning, secondary instructional planning, facility school operations. That would include our safety protocols and the materials that we have to have for our safety protocols, technology planning, athletics planning, before and after-school programming planning. And we included club planning in that. And then, of course, the very important social-emotional planning, which involves making sure that we have the proper support ready for our students and the proper support ready for our staff. And then we can connect with families, which was our last committee. And as we receive guidance, we will be making sure that these committees have stakeholders involved, including community members, when appropriate, because the family voice is obviously paramount in all of this. Having said that, today I received guidance that the, the guidelines that will be coming out from the commissioner for the fall are going to give us, and I quote, "About 85% of the information we need to start school safely in the fall," which means that those guidelines are really going to guide us. They're going to basically tell us what we need to do based on the health situation that's present. So with that, the commissioner, the commissioner's advice was to not jump the gun on this. And that, those are the words that, that were used. And to make sure that although we're thinking thoughtfully right now about what it could like, and we're setting up our structures, that we really do need to wait for that guidance to come in. Believe me, I know I speak for a lot of superintendents when we want this information. Like yesterday, there's an urgency and our need to plan to make people feel secure and safe. But we do have to follow where we are right now. Particularly, the guidance that we have coming to us says that we're going to have a pretty firm idea of what we can and we can't do. So with that, our student advisory committee looked at what things may look like in the fall. And I have Caroline Patterson here. Patterson, who is, you've met her many times. She's amazing. And she's going to be summarizing a bit what we spoke about. And it was a really rich conversation about what it might look like. And I posed some possibilities. The first question essentially said, "If we are faced with restrictions such as social distancing, staggered start times, restriction of activities, all the things that I know people have seen out there in the media, what would you, as students, want school leaders and teachers to remember and to focus on as they are creating plans?" And the second question was, "How do you feel that school leaders and teachers can best support students if a situation takes place that involves such social and physical restrictions?" Next question we talked about was, "How do you feel teachers can best incorporate remote learning if some hybrid model of remote and some face-to-face learning is advised or required by the state?" Obviously, there's some are conjectural. What, and then finally, what unique qualities of Cohasset and Cohasset students should school leaders and teachers consider as we plan for the fall? So I'll let Caroline summarize a bit about what we spoke, spoke of to give you an idea where the students were standing and how they were feeling. And it reemphasized the importance to me, as the superintendent, that I really have to advocate for student voice throughout this whole process. And particularly as we get into the fall, whatever that may be, that we listen consistently to their voice and that we make sure that our proactive measures reflect that. So without further ado, long intro for you, Caroline, but I'll let Caroline talk a little bit about that meeting. So Caroline.
Thank you. So, yeah, definitely, like, as you're saying, we always seem to talk for a while, and the ideas are so present because we reach from eighth graders all the way to the seniors. So definitely a lot to talk about. But just a quick update for remote learning on the student's side. I think that the consensus is that everyone's pretty well-adapted being over a month in. And if struggles have arisen, the most, the most helpful way to cope with like an overwhelming workload is just to be as open as you can with your teachers and communicate them through Google Classroom, Aspen email, Remind, many different platforms, which has been really helpful. I think additionally, there is some trouble with AP exams because those have been taken for the first two weeks. I was unfortunately one of the 1% that my Calc exam didn't update and upload on time. But the teachers have all been now going forward, like, really helpful, providing as many resources as they can to help ensure that the students are getting credit for these college-level courses that they're taking. And I had another exam today, and that went great, so looking good on that. And our seniors, Maddie and Margaret, who've been on here, of course, a lot, they reflected, as many other high school seniors are now on their last week of high school, like with work and everything. And Dr. Sullivan was very optimistic in how he could help provide socially distance and celebration of all of them and their hard work and achievements, which I'm sure he'll get into in the senior update. And then, as the questions were posed, it would just like spurred a lot of interest and conversation about how big of a change it's going to be returning to school in September and how it's pretty obvious to everyone that school is not made to be an environment built by physical distance. And apart from like the straight education, clubs, sports, music, and theater, all, and many more activities that really enhance the experience for students while in the building and outside of the building. So just obviously keeping those things in mind, and no one really knows. But thinking of how we can be as creative and obviously, like, there's going to be guidelines put. But how, like Cohasset is so unique in its resources that we can take advantage of those and try to help as many students kind of return back to how they enjoyed going to school. And our quality of education at Cohasset, we provided such a high level. So maintaining that in its most effective state is just as equally important as the social aspects. So kind of just maintaining a balance of those when thinking about returning. And also, at the same time, making sure that a learning environment for students and faculty is comfortable because obviously regulations are in place. But we want to make sure that those aren't hindering and too restricting to our school community, but also being safe at the same time. So our goal is that we all want to go back to school in September the best we can. But just, we already had such a, like, presence, I think, before, like, the hit of the virus in March about social-emotional learning and how important that was in our schools. So trying to maintain that. And obviously, Dr. Scollins and Dr. Sullivan were kind of like the two front rows as sure as everyone was to like pushing that. So upholding that practice as well as others in, I'd say, the safest way for all of us to be happy and healthy going back to school in September.
Thank you, Caroline. Very well said. And, you know, I just want to, I don't know, Caroline, in the rotation, if you'll be back again. But before I forget to do this, I want to thank you for your amazing work, not only on the SSAC, as I call it, but the, this as being the lone junior advisor here. And I'm hoping Caroline comes back. I believe she will. I think we're going to do great things with that team. So does the committee have any questions for Caroline? That was an excellent update, excellent summary.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Caroline.
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions either. It's, sometimes it's tough to ask questions about things that you don't know what they're going to look like. I certainly hope that you can find some time to come back and join us next year. I think your experience reporting to the committee would be a great mentoring for some of the younger, you know, the junior and/or another senior to come on board. We've really appreciated your voice. And you've provided for us the ability to see through the eyes of the student, which was Superintendent Sullivan's theme for the year. So thank you.
Yes, thank you all for the opportunity. And it was definitely kind of took a toll that none of us were really expecting at the end of the year. But I had a lot of fun, and it was good, it was a really nice opportunity to be a part of this. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Caroline.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that was a wonderful update. So I do want to mention that the wellness team also met. We probably will mention that later on. I know Paul Kearney was on that team. And that was also an excellent conversation regarding how we can support the students and how we can get some more social opportunities for them, albeit virtually right now. But that's starting to bubble up in some of the schools. Particularly Deer Hill is doing some virtual, we have a virtual Disney night planned, a virtual trivia night planned. They have cooking with Mr. U. So he's going to actually barbecue with the kids virtually, which I think will be really neat. He's our amazing phys ed teacher, Brett humans I'm referring to at the Deer Hill. So that was a nice conversation. And that moves us to our next point of order, which is the hopeful appointment of Barbara Sawanka as our Director of Student Services. I did see Barbara here. There's Barbara. Welcome, Barbara. I'll unmute you, so welcome, Barbara. Good to see you.
Thank you. It's very nice to be here with all of you.
And it's, it's funny, I have never seen Barbara in person. But I think we've logged over, you know, five hours now of talking virtually.
It's true.
But we were very excited, I'm very excited to bring Barbara before you as our finalist. I should say that it was a wonderful process. Some amazing people applied for the job. We had over 13 people involved in the committee. We had actually 14. And we had representatives mostly from our special education department. But we also had administrators and parents, members of the CPAC. Obviously, Ashley Colery was on the team. Thank you, Ashley. And did a wonderful job. And Barbara really was shining through every step of the process. So before, I'll tell you a little bit about Barbara and her background. So as I said, I'm really happy to introduce Barbara Sawanka to you. Barbara has over 30 years' experience in various special education capacities, almost exclusively in North Attleboro. I think if Barbara is appointed, and I'm hoping she is, of course, I think we're going to break some hearts in North Attleboro based on the work that she's done there. Barbara started her impressive career as a special education teacher working in several capacities in North Attleboro, including working as a resource teacher, an inclusion teacher, a substantially separate teacher for students with behavior manifestations, and a substantially separate teacher for students with manifestations of autism spectrum disorder. For the past nine years, Barbara has served as North Attleboro Special Education Team Chair. Did you get that right? Nine or 10 years?
Yes, it was nine.
Okay, good. All right, okay. Barbara is described by our colleagues and former supervisors as thoughtful, collaborative, student-centered, patient, a great relationship builder, intelligent, and courageous. On behalf of the hiring team, which included 13 members, as I said, of the Cohasset School Community and Special Education Team, I am thrilled to present Barbara Sawanka as our finalist for the position of Director of Student Services. So in this awkward Zoom format, just looking around here to see who you may have met and who you may not have met yet. I'll start with just the, before I turn it over to Ellen, I'll just start with the folks I know who you've met. You see Dr. Scollins there, just could wave, Dr. Scollins, our Assistant Superintendent. Michael McMillan, who is our outgoing Director of Finance and Operations. I know you've met Michael, and you've met Ashley, but she'll obviously be talking to you in a moment, who's on your hiring team. We also have Susan Owen. Welcome back, Susan. Susan is our incoming Director of Finance and Operations. So the two of you, if you're appointed, will be working quite closely together. And I'll have the, the chair members just introduce themselves, and then I'll leave it over to you, Ellen, if that's okay?
Sure.
So Ellen, you, yeah, good.
Hi, I'm Ellen Marr. I'm the present chair of the- Hi, I'm Ellen Marr. I'm the present Chair of the Cohasset School Committee. I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. I read through your credentials. It's excellent. It takes a lot of courage to leave a district you've been in for a very long time. So but you definitely appear to be up for the challenge. I don't, I don't know how much of, you know, what we do here was shared, but we frequently throughout the course of the year, get updates from our Director of Student Services and kind of idea-driven or things that you think would be important for the committee to know and to learn about our special education program here in Cohasset. Something because of our size, you know, that always is kind of a challenge for us is keeping students in district and getting a cohort large enough to provide services in district. And so any ideas or experience you have on that, I'd be particularly interested in. I think it's important for children to be able to stay in their home districts if we can provide the services that they need and fulfill our educational requirement for them. That's not always possible, but you know, COVID-19 notwithstanding, it might be time to think outside the box a little bit on that and see what we can do because we have, in my opinion, a tremendous staff, a very dedicated special education teachers. It's, they're, they're well-regarded and highly respected in the district and they're, in my opinion, a great group and a great support group for them are the education support professionals, which almost exclusively work in special education. We have some at the elementary levels that are more activity-driven, but most of our education support professionals are in the special education area. So that's, that's kind of all I have to say. Well, Ashley, do you have anything?
Hi Barbara, it's great to see you again. I'm thrilled that you're going to be joining us. I was very excited after the first round of interviews that I participated in and was really happy to hear the enthusiasm that both Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins had after having the opportunity to spend more time getting to know you. So I'm looking forward to the same.
As am I. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jen?
I just want to say welcome. I'm really excited. This is a very tough position to fill. It's, it's often a position where, you know, there are a lot of challenges and at the same time, you need someone with a lot of warmth and love. And so, welcome to Cohasset.
Thank you so much.
I can't, Patrick, I can't see anyone else on my screen, so I don't know if.
No, they're all here. So Craig.
I guess I can. Hi Barbara, welcome aboard. It's so nice to meet you. And we're looking forward to a new fresh vision on the student services. And we're looking forward to, as I want to also echo what Ellen was saying about trying to keep kids in our district. I think that's big. And looking forward to, to meeting you, finally meeting you in person and welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
And finally, I don't know if Craig has any comments. He's on phone, the phone, I believe.
I'm on the computer. I just don't have my video. And Ellen, if you can't see everyone, you can hit gallery view and it lets you see everyone that's in the meeting. Anyway, my name is Craig McLoughlin. Barbara, welcome to Cohasset. I'm sorry that you can't see me. I would, I could say that my camera's not working, but that would be a lie. I just don't like the video element of Zoom. And I hope, while I hope to meet you in person in near future, and I remain optimistic that we will do so. In the meantime, I just say welcome. And if you're wondering what I look like, you just picture a kind of a cross between Tom Brady and Brad Pitt. Pretty good, pretty good, I think, thing to go off of. But anyway, welcome to Cohasset. I've heard nothing but praises about you. So I'm very excited to start working with you.
Thank you.
We want to make sure we're all there when you meet Craig for the first time.
So you can agree with my assessment publicly.
Barbara, do you have any questions for us?
I cannot say that I have questions at this moment. I just really want to share with all of you what a true pleasure and an honor it is to be here and joining you in Cohasset. Hopefully, I am very much looking forward to it. I felt such a great connectivity to all the teams when I was interviewing. In the middle of the interviewing, on one of those lovely Saturdays, I actually took a ride with my husband through the town and also, you know, got a real sense and feel for the town. Just really very impressed with everything that I've experienced through browsing through, you know, your website, driving through your town, meeting with as many of the folks as I've had the privilege to so far and just listening to Caroline too, just really drove home, just what a wonderful place it is, what a wonderful community. I mean that in every sense of the word in terms of how, you know, you all connect and build together. And to hear her say things like, you know, she wants to be back at school, that all of the students want to be back at school, that they were really looking forward to those opportunities, just speaks volumes for the district and really lets me know that I'm coming to the right place hopefully.
Right. Excellent. So with that being said, I would like to request a motion to appoint Barbara Sawanka as our Director of Student Services beginning July 1st, 2020.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second, Paul Kearney. All in favor, roll call please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Brad slash Tom?
Greg?
Greg?
Greg? Okay, well, we, we have a quorum. We have four to zero. So congratulations and welcome to Cohasset Public Schools.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Welcome Barbara. Great job and thank you. And Barbara, you can, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can, you can go and celebrate. But thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. I look forward to meeting all of you.
Thank you.
And big thank you to the committee. Wonderful.
I'm sorry, everyone. I do vote for it. I'm dealing, I'm on my own right now with kids and it's barely frustrating, so I apologize. And of course, my son waited until the moment that I would be needed to say something to have a complete tantrum. So I apologize.
Craig, I can feel your pain. You have no idea how much I can feel your pain.
So Craig, we'll mark you as an affirmative. Would you like us to redo the roll call?
No, I'll just say aye, Craig McLoughlin for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara. Have a great night.
You as well, everyone.
Thank you. All right, do you want to invite Tanya in?
Yes. Hey, Tanya. So Ellen, I cannot see the questions coming in, so I don't know if you, when you want to do that or, but other than that, I'll let you introduce Tanya. Hi, Tanya, nice to.
Hi, nice to meet you, everybody.
So so far, there are no questions. Is that correct, Michael? Yes.
That is great. No questions, yeah.
Okay, so as a bit of background, Tanya, formerly of the Advisory Committee and is now spearheading the Alternative Energy Committee for the town for a few years now, I would say at least two or three, if my recollection suits, it is, is all there. And last week, she made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen and then forwarded along to us. I don't remember if it's Tuesday, late Tuesday night or late Wednesday night. Anyway, we had some back and forth and forwarded that whole dialogue to the committee about what's being asked of the school committee and that and I also forwarded, hopefully everyone got it this afternoon, the actual warrant language, which isn't something that we had for review, which kind of clarifies a lot of questions I had. So Tanya, if you would be so kind as to kind of give an overview of what this, this project is, well, not a project, it's a proposal.
Right. Thank you, Ellen. So, great introduction. I was on the Advisory Committee for six years. And on the Advisory Committee, I was on the Alter- as Chair from 2011, 13. And eight and a half years ago, we went before the town to ask the town for permission to put solar panels on the school roofs and on the old landfill. We'll give a little bit of history on that. We're back before you today. Again, I'm back on the Advisory Committee air to talk about opportunity. And it is an opportunity for school committee to consider. I apologize, we did not have the, to need to socialize this with more advanced notice. As the Alternative Energy Committee started moving forward with our task from the Board of Selectmen to think about reliability and resiliency, the opportunity of looking again at potential solar panels on the roofs of the town buildings, including potentially the school roofs, came up again. There's also a lot of other technology today that did not exist and was not economic eight and a half years ago. That technology includes energy storage. That technology includes, of course, electric vehicle charging stations, which may become more important as people start buying more electric vehicles going forward. So there's a lot of things the Alternative Energy Committee is working with. And we are tasked with looking at reliability and resilience of the town from a power perspective. We have outages every year. That is not normal. Generators, that's not necessarily normal. The schools all have backup generation. That is somewhat normal, but the amount of time you have to use it is not normal. And so potentially looking at solar energy as economically to create some reliability as well as save money for the schools is something that the Alternative Energy Committee looked at 10 years ago and we've started looking at it again today in a different context, probably since January. I think as we're looking at, things happen, funding started to open up from the state. Incentives that the federal government has supported have started to go away and phase out, including the investment tax credit. So there's a window of opportunity and we felt that it was important for the town to think about, is there a way for us to use more solar? So far, the solar energy array on the old landfill that was installed in August of 2018 has saved the town $150,000 electricity costs. Some of that is your savings. There is an opportunity to put solar on the school roofs. Now, there's an issue with the school roof age. I get it. We can talk about that. But there's also now economic ways to have carports, carports combined with charging. I think if you're watching the Super Bowl game last year, you saw Audi says one third of their vehicles that they sell are going to be electric. GM has said that they'll have 25 electric vehicle models. So there's lots of things happening from an alternative energy point of view. What do we do today? We are coming before you because the Alternative Energy Committee has been working to look at potential sites in the town for solar. We originally were going down a path of doing a study. We received funding to do study and as we started to talk study, or you can put it out to bid and we'll do the study for you. We will do the research. We'll look at the roofs. We'll look at the potential opportunities for carports. We can give you a proposal. You can go with it. You don't have to go with it. Why would you spend money on a study when if you put it out to bid, the developers will do work for you? So this was all of a sudden another path to take. Given that there's money involved, even with the pandemic going on and the craziness, we thought it worthwhile coming to the Board of Selectmen to say, here's an opportunity. The window of opportunity could close and we come to you in the same vein to say, there is an opportunity. We can't guarantee you it will go forward. You don't necessarily have to commit that it would go forward. This just goes to the town and asks for permission to lease, in your case, the school roofs for solar energy. And if you also want to ask, and I know there was uncertainty and concerns before, again, no obligation, but if you want to ask the town to potentially be able to lease the parking lots for carports, if that makes economic sense, if it makes safety sense, reliability sense, then go forward with that. So that is what, as is drafted, is for purposes of leasing the roofs of the school, ask the town for permission to do it. Eight and a half years ago, we received authorization from the town to lease the high school, middle school roof. We went forward with an RFP and I don't know if any of you remember this, but the roof was leaking. It had a lot of issues. In that process, we found there was a warranty. We pursued the warranty and had the roof replaced. We never pursued the solar panels because the age of the roof made it such that it just didn't seem like it was going to be able to work. We were almost waiting for the idea to still be in existence and the roofs to be replaced before we move forward. Point, there's a lot of uncertainty about whether these incentives would continue.
Did we freeze?
Yeah, Tanya, I think you just froze up.
Ellen, well, we haven't, is there anything in particular here you want me to share? I'm just looking at this document.
No, I think, I think what's important is actually the warrant language. And if the committee, I mean, I have a thousand questions, which we can, you know, pursue at a later time when I hear, you know, battery storage, power storage on property where we have children, I don't understand what those elements are. So I would be hard pressed to support that. Electrical vehicle charging stations, we, we don't, as a school district, have a fleet. We have access to a car. So, but, but the warrant article authorizes the Cohasset School Committee to lease the school building roofs and other portions of the school building real estate for 20 years. So that is the warrant article that the town will give us that authorization, does not commit a, commit the school committee, this one or any school committee in the future to any project. The school committee will have final say on any and all projects regarding any additional solar configurations. So I wasn't clear on that from last week's documentation, but the warrant article and as the Board of Selectmen indicated last night, said that that's all this warrant article allows for is the the school committee to lease the school roofs and other portions of real estate. So that's it. The warrant will close on May, on May the 26th, so that's why we have, you know, we're, we're requested to put this in tonight's meeting because we don't meet prior to the 26th and some of the grant money to do some of these studies might not be available at special town meeting in the fall. So I don't know if we still have Tanya or not. Does, does anyone have any questions? Ashley, no questions. Jen?
So what, what's the downside of voting for this? I mean, it doesn't seem, so we have a substantial say in in the scope of the project. Like this doesn't really commit us. What does this commit us to, I guess, is my question.
Yes. So, sorry, I lost you.
Are you back?
Yep, we see you, Tanya.
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay.
Sorry, lost you, came back. All my kids, I think, are online doing schoolwork. I have two kids in the schools. So this, honestly, there's no downside. This asks the town to give, and so what you're looking at is a first draft. We scaled it back for the Board of Selectmen to focus only on solar. Here you see two options. One is not just solar, but to sort of expand the opportunity to do more than solar, to allow for leasing of land for energy storage or electric vehicle charging. The ability to lease gives you, and it would be school committee, not the Board of Selectmen, because you control schools, even though it's town property. That was made clear last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting. But this will give the school committee the ability to lease land if the town approves to pursue these types of opportunities. And I say they are opportunities. The model that has been happening in the energy industry is developers front the money and then enter into a long-term contract with the schools. And if it makes economic sense, you can do it. If it doesn't make economic sense, you don't do it. What, what, frankly, I don't think there's a downside. This from an alternative energy committee view, we would work with you closely to look at the opportunities. We would help you put out a proposal, as we did a few years ago, to try to obtain bids on whatever you want to do. Again, you can just go with the longer one or to focus only on solar, you choose. The reality is we might get bid that don't make sense. We, last time, what we had to do for the schools, and we'd have to probably do it again, is require a one-time removal of the solar energy array and, and replacement for purposes of replacing the school roofs. Make it more expensive. I wish the school roofs were able to be replaced by now, but they're not. And, and the, the target seems to keep moving further and further away. It's not a 20-year roof, now it's a 28-year roof. Maybe the state will decide it's a 30-year roof. We can handle that in the request for proposal and the contract. So all this does is it goes to the town and says, we, the schools, want to save money. We, the schools, see that we might need electric charging stations going forward and it just might be best to have a developer install them under contract, if, if that makes sense. Or we might get funding to be able to buy those charging stations from the state or the Department of Energy. There's just a lot of money right now being thrown at municipalities. We would like to give you the opportunity and, and help you find a way to pick it up and use it and save more money.
So actually, Tanya, the, the document that's up there is not the document that would be under consideration on the town warrant. It's the draft language for the warrant articles that was submitted to the Board of Selectmen last night, correct?
Correct. Well, it's up to you. The language that was submitted, Board of Selectmen, was focused on the solar because that is a very time-sensitive piece. Because of the eight credits and the federal tax credits, by the end of the year, those incentives may not exist. It, it's the difference between making this a $35,000 savings or a $0 savings. It's like that much of a difference. So we focused it for the Board of Selectmen on just the solar. I can pull that up, or I don't know if somebody else has what we presented to the Board of Selectmen. We can pull that up.
I, I did, I got it this afternoon and I did send it out. Because it, it reads, lease the following school building roofs and other portions of the school building real estate for up to 20 years for the development and operation of a solar, parentheses PV, power electric generation facility for purposes of reducing the town's energy costs to the maximum extent feasible. So that's roofs and/or real estate.
That's roofs and/or building real estate. Again, if you want to make it clear that you want to be able to open it up for potentially carports, we can make sure with Town Council that, that language allows that. If you want to make it just for the roofs, we can do that too.
Yeah, it's, it seems to mimic the town language in the first article.
Because what we learned with the landfill is we got the approval to lease land. And then we did get approval and easement to be able to get the transmission line, the distribution line to and from, and the communications line to and from. And we had given easement to allow the developer to come and install. So we have, with new language, incorporated all of that in. And written the same language that it's to do the roofs and the building real estate. The building roofs and the building real estate is the language as it's currently written.
Real estate as defined as landmass, not as, as the structure? Tanya, is the, is the realis, is the real estate, is that defining the landmass or just the structure?
So it says building real estate, which ties it to the building. And then there's the separate part two and part three of the new language, which allows for the easement, which would be the land.
Okay. No, the, the reason I was, I was asking you to clarify that is what if, for instance, that there were open space on school property where a solar array could, could be installed in a non-intrusive way that wasn't on a building? Does this cover that?
I think if we wanted to be clear about that, we should take out the word building in front of the word real estate. Because then real estate would allow for you to put the solar energy array on the land. As, right now, I think you could look at it and argue that the real estate is only associated with building. And again, in a narrow way.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Ashley, you had a question?
The Town Council vetted this, right, Tanya?
Correct.
So if we were, if we were thinking about changing the language, they would have to probably revisit it, correct?
We would definitely want to confirm with the Town Council that what you had voted was appropriate or whatever you wanted. But Town Council has vetted both of them. The one that's focused on the solar only, again, we wanted to make sure that the key opportunity that had the timing issue was brought to you to try to make it simpler, especially because we haven't had to, been able to socialize the broader microgrid concept and all of that.
Yep. Thank you.
I have, I have a question, Tanya, because this is very, this is all very new to me. And I don't really have a background or understanding in this. How, how does the solar array on the roof tie into the microgrid? Is it a vital component of that? Or can you explain the relationship between?
Yep. So in a way, you already have a bit of a microgrid because of your backup generation. So you already have backup power. The way that the solar array fits in is it is a renewable energy. And there's a lot more money associated with creating a microgrid that's built around renewable energy. And so not only do we right now sitting here today have an opportunity to save money on electricity by going solar, we also then have the ability to get money to invest in a battery supply in a energy storage system because it fits in with the renewable. For example, the federal incentives for storage require you to only get the incentives for the energy that comes from renewable energy. So if we move forward with the solar, that's the first step to start saving money immediately and to open up the door to be able to get more funding from the state and the federal government associated with battery storage. If we just said, look, we want to do a battery to help us with the gas or diesel units that you use for your backup generation at the schools, we are going to have less opportunity to get grant money because they're not trying to put grant money to help fossil fuels. So by going forward with solar, again, on the rooftop or if you're interested in exploring carports, then there's an opportunity to also move forward, again, with not the same time constraints, but we want to get that opportunity perhaps before the town, by the fall town meeting, to move forward with storage, which could utilize that solar. So right now, the landfill solar, when the power goes out and coacid, that landfill solar shuts off. We lose that free energy. And, and the reason why is because we don't have a way to store it and it can't be put back into the grid. So by starting with solar, it then opens the door for us to be able to move forward to some of the other equipment associated with a microgrid, such as energy storage.
Thank you. Paul or Craig, do you have any questions?
I do not.
I guess I, I can say, first of all, thank you for all the work that you do. This is an exciting time to get, solar power is the way of the future. And it's nice to see that we're in Cohasset, that we're being proactive to it. I just, I support, I support it. I got to say that definitely concerned about the roof and are we going to fix the roof first? Or how are we going to work that? Is it definitely a consideration? And I'm sure that needs to be addressed.
So, and Tanya, just, just in, in, you know, full transparency, we have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the ninth of June to reconstitute the School Facility Committee, which is a bylaw in town, to begin the exploration process of an assessment of our schools, particularly the middle high school, and what the needs might be going forward, whether it's a new building, an addition, a renovation, an expansion, a separation, whatever that might be. So that would also play into, you know, whatever proposal comes up from the AEC. And, and as I'm sure you know, it's, it's a long process, you know, for a school building, School Facility Committee to come forth with a proposal. But we would definitely have them, you know, interview you or your committee to, to get feedback on, on what new construction might, might look like in terms of solar array on the roof.
That is great. We have a liaison to the Town Hall Renovation Committee that's focused on helping the Town Hall renovation team understand what the potential geothermal and alternative energy options are. And we would love to be able to work with you in our role as the alternative energy committee for the town as you move forward with school options. That would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you. So if there are no further questions, I would like to get a motion, the, the article number is not language, but is not numbered, but to approve the article for the lease of school property for citing of a solar power electric generation facility as outlined in the draft warrant article approved, vetted by Town Council last night, the 19th of May.
So moved. Sorry, Craig.
Okay, so Craig moved it. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
President, I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mark.
I, I was trying to sneak in just one question.
Okay.
The, Tanya, so the lease of the land, in, in some of the things I was reading, there is a one-time that you can move the solar array. So would this have any impact on if we had a renovation, we could move the solar array? Or is that kind of a separate issue? This is?
Right, no. So, great question. The town would give you approval to lease the roof or the town property. Again, if we're contemplating a new building on the same site, we might want to think about, go back to council and make sure that this language allows for that. What we did last time, anticipating that the roofs would be replaced, not the whole building, but that the roofs would be replaced, we, in the request for proposal, we got the town permission for the leasing. And in the request for proposal to the developers, we required them to give us a bid that included a one-time option by the school committee to have them remove the solar panels and then put them back on.
So that would be negotiated once there's a
project.
Lease process. Okay, that, that was my question. Thank you. And I, sorry, I interrupted.
No, no, that's right. But, no, no. So, so that's exactly right. And so that's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of breaks and, and milestones and stop-go points once we get the town's approval. If we get prices back that don't make sense, then you, you don't have to accept any of them, right? Most certainly, the RFP says we're under any obligation to that. If what you're, again, this is for purposes of leasing the existing sites as identified on the lot numbers. And so we just need to be very clear, asking the town to approve because the state rules are very particular about disposition of town assets, whether it's a sale or a lease.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's resume our vote. I was the last one that said aye.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig McClellan.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, everybody. And we're working with you and it's a, and the schools are one of our users. It's a way to save money.
That's great. Look forward to it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'm just looking for my senior update. There it is. Moving right along. We, our next item on the agenda is senior activity update. Hasn't changed all that much since we talked with Principal Scott. Some of the things have come to fruition. I want to thank Craig McClellan for his fabulous work with the banners. And Ashley helped with the banners and the committee for the support of the banners. The town for collaborating with the banners, Principal Scott for his leadership. It was a great team effort and I think they look absolutely beautiful. It makes me proud to see them up there on the common. And I'm sure that the seniors feel the same way. I know the ones I've spoken to have. But those have gone up. And we are working currently on a class night, which is our scholarship night. It's going to be shown on 143 TV. I filmed a couple of scholarship presentations myself. It should be a nice event, albeit a virtual event. It'll at least be memorialized on video, which is great. We have a ongoing senior athlete salute, which is something that if you follow Twitter, you can see Steve Vertandi, our athletic director, putting on frequently. It's, I think every day he does a senior athlete salute, which is wonderful. So thank you, Athletic Director Vertandi, for doing that. Athletic Director, actually, a side note, he just had a, a great conversation with, I believe his name is Andy Copeland, who's a professional lacrosse coach with his lacrosse team. And I know Dr. Skones and I attended a part of that. It was very impressive. And thank you for your continued work, Steve Vertandi. The drive-in event, our drive-in event is the, on the last day of senior classes, which is on the 27th, and it is at the Music Circus. I'll show you just a little bit of what that's going to look like, if I can find it. There we go. Can you see my screen?
Nope.
All right, well, then you're not. Oh, then I'm, I'm gonna try it again.
Do you need help, Patrick?
I always need help, Michael. But I think I found it. There we go. Yes, I, I, the answer is always yes. If anybody asked that, I, I'll take that. But this is the, these are the instructions that I want the committee to be aware of it. Because obviously, we're trying to create safe events. And these are the instructions that Principal Scott and team sent out to families regarding this event of the Music Circus. I think it was very well done. One of the things I loved about it is the close collaboration with the Cohasset Police Department and the Board of Health. So thank you very much, Chief Quigley and team and Pam Fahey for your work on making this special event happen for our seniors. This is the showing of our senior video. And, and I also, you know, I'd be totally remiss if I didn't thank the Social Music Circus for, for allowing us to, to have it there. And my understanding is that they're going to stream it live, the event live via their YouTube channel. So that'll be wonderful for folks to see. And it should be a socially, just social distancing safe event that will provide the opportunity for the seniors to see their video and to enjoy it, at least in the same space, if not, you know, physically together, they'll be in their cars. So this is a, it was something that the senior class really wanted and we really wanted to provide it for them. So you can see the rules that are set for them, very, very carefully orchestrated. And it should be a nice, should be a nice event. It's, it's from eight to nine PM on the seniors' last day of school, which is on the 27th. Does the team have any questions about this event? Just want to make sure you understand the, what's happening there.
Patrick, is the, is the video a compilation of the different videos and photographs that have come out during the year, like the pep rally video? And another one, Jason, is it Jason?
Morning.
He did. So is that what this is?
Yes, it's a, it's a, I haven't seen the video, but Yes, it's a, it's a, I haven't seen the video, but I believe it's going to be a very nice tribute to our seniors. And they certainly deserve a very nice tribute. So I just want to make sure, any questions on the event? Because I, I know this is something that's, that's happening. It's a large event. It's our first large gathering of seniors, and we're making sure it's very safe to do that. So if there's no further questions, I'll move on.
You want us there, Pat?
Um, you can certainly come. I mean, it's for the seniors, you know, it's really their event. But I, I, I don't need you there in terms of, you know, any type of, you know, security measure or anything. But to be there as a, as a school committee member, you know, you're certainly welcome, very welcome to come. You know, this, I'm going to be very much in the background on this. This is for the seniors, by the seniors, by their, by their teachers and their leaders there. But I'm sorry.
No.
I didn't say no.
I know. I know you didn't. I did. Because it was awkward for you to say no.
Yeah, Craig, it's not necessary for you to be there. I, I think
Last is more, last is more.
Committee's support to allow something this to hap, like this to happen in, in this particular situation is, is really worth its weight in gold.
Got it. I was just asking if you wanted like a show of solidarity or something. I, I expect that anyone need me there for security. In fact, the mere sight of me might just further, you know, incentivize a prospective assailant.
No, it, it, certainly you don't have to be there. This is really about the seniors just having some fun in a very socially safe way. So that's that. Okay, move on with just some of the senior events. I'm getting faster at the sharing of my screen. It's getting better. Still not seamless. The silence is deafening in between my sharings. So we have the drive-in event. And then we have a nice day called, we're calling Diploma Day. And it's very simple to the title. It's an opportunity for students to get a photograph with families and receive their diploma. That also will be at the Music Circus. I will be at that event on the, on the 6th. And I'll be in the background, wearing a, probably a graduation gown and my, my hood. But the people are just going to come in, get their diploma, be able to take a picture as a family group. We're not really putting anybody else in there, and then get back into the car. It's just, it's a nice moment with their caps and gowns to be able to ensure we have at least that for them, depending on what we're able to provide going forward with the graduation. So that should be a nice event. It's really a drive, a drive-through, get out, get a couple of pictures, get back in and move on. And we'll do that basically all day on the 6th of June. Any questions on that event?
Same question, Dr. Sullivan. Would you want any one of us there just for a sort of show of, I, I don't know what faculty and staff are going to be there. I, I don't know.
I don't think many faculty and staff are going to be there. You know, I, I anticipate, obviously, Principal Scott will be there, Assistant Principal Noyes will be there, Stephanie Moriarty will be there as the class advisor, probably a few staff members. This one, I would say if you, you're going to come to one, this would be the one to come to, although it's all day. So I don't think your presence is absolutely needed there. I, I am feeling more and more confident, and I'm going to say that, that we will, there's a good potential, we're going to have some sort of an opportunity to have a graduation on the 7th of August. That's, that's just my personal feeling. There's nothing official. But, you know, that would be the event to be at, of course. But I would think the diploma is really just for the, for the students and families to get a picture. So I don't think so, Craig.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So any questions on the drive-in, on the Diploma Day? This is such an odd list of senior events. I never thought
Waiting for you to get to busy bee jumpers. Go ahead.
What's that?
I said, I'm just waiting for you to get to the busy bee jumpers one.
The busy bee jumpers?
The field day.
The field day.
Oh, all right. Okay.
So then, I don't mean to rush you. I just think
So, no, I'll be honest with you. I am, I'm going to be very confessional here. I don't know what the busy bee jumpers are.
Okay.
I too am intrigued.
It's like a bouncy house, but I don't know.
Yeah, I will ask that question, that's for sure. But the next two events are obviously the two events that we would have to, you know, some things would have to change and we'd have to be able to be given permission to do these. We had planned all these with the, the highest intention and hope. These two events, obviously, are the, the most difficult that I'm about to mention, to social distance. So they're probably the, the ones that are least likely to happen in the group, you know, as planned. So, you know, just to put that, to state the obvious, one is a prom. But there may be pieces of it we can do, and we'll figure that out. And a, and a pre-prom run by parents before it on the 5th, that is scheduled of August now. That is scheduled for the Red Lion, and August is a little bit away. So there's always that hope. And then there's the Class Field Day with, of course, the busy bee jumpers, actually. And I don't know what the busy bee jumpers are, but the Class Field Day would be as fun a possible day as we can have for our seniors for two hours on that. They deserve an absolute celebration. So we're going to do whatever we can to provide that for them. And then finally, on the 7th of August is our graduation at Alum Night Field, which is set to start at 4:00 PM. And I am feeling more confident that we'll be able to have some sort of social distancing graduation. But I, I, again, don't have any official word on that. But my hope is we're going to be able to do that for the seniors. So that's really where we are right now. And any questions on any of the events that I just mentioned? I want to make sure we, we have a, you have an opportunity to sign in and give any input you have. All right, well, I'll take that as, we're in a good spot with that. People are working really hard behind the scenes. So thank you for everyone who's doing that. And then finally, on the, the superintendent's report agenda was just the discussion of future presentation dates for school improvement plans and handbooks. As you all know, our handbooks and school improvement plans are typically presented in Cohasset towards the end of the year. Last year, because we had so much transition, we actually presented the middle school and high school handbooks in the fall, not handbooks, um, school improvement plans in the fall. And we had done the handbooks last spring. With the, the trying times and the thought that, a couple of things. One is that both our improvement plans and absolutely our handbooks could be impacted by COVID-19 and the regulations that are set for us. Depending on when we get that guidance, we're certainly not going to have it ready June 3rd or whatever the first, the meeting is in June, and probably not the second school committee meeting in June either. So with, with that guidance kind of, you know, possibly not coming till the end of June, my request, or I guess, thought is that we could put off the handbooks and the school improvement plans into the fall. It will give the teams also a better chance to meet with their school councils, who of course create those. The meetings, we've had a couple of meetings with school, school councils, or I should say, I know that Dear Hill has met. But because of the pandemic and our, and our getting up and running with everything else, we really haven't had a chance to, to go at the same pace as we typically, but with our school improvement plans and handbooks. So with the pending changes and the thought that we're going to need to do some planning over the summer, what I'm asking, I want the, just to get the thoughts from the committee on possibly delaying it to the fall. So I open it up for your thoughts.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
That seems to make sense to me. Ellen, I don't know whether our policy says by June 30th, do we just make a, I think, last year, I remember us, I think we just voted to have it happen at a later date. We didn't change the policy.
That's correct.
So.
Yep. I would, um, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want our leadership team to be going through handbooks and school improvement plans simultaneously to figuring out what school is going to look like, only to have to change it again. I'd rather have them have the, the thought, the time and, and the thoughtfulness they need to make whatever adjustments, because there will be adjustments, and, and do it once and do it properly, rather than adhering to our prescribed, pre-COVID-19 schedule. So we, we don't, we don't, I don't believe we need to vote on this.
No, I think the, what I was looking for you to give thoughts on is just removing it from the agendas in June so that we could do it in a later date, and I'm losing the fall. So if we're, if you're amenable to that, then that's, that's what I, what I request. So I just wanted to get some thoughts.
Yeah. Anyone else on the committee have any questions or thoughts on this? Everyone in agreement? You can nod. Yes. Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. You made the leadership team happy. They'll, they really felt like this is something was going to be difficult to do, given the circumstances. And I think it's the right move. All right. That is it for, from my report. Any questions coming in, Michael?
No.
I answered them all. That's awesome.
No questions.
So I will move to Michael now. Michael, I can put your, your reports up if you'd like.
That's okay. I've got all them, because I'm gonna, I'll go through them.
Go ahead.
All right, so the first one is the fee reimbursement. So in light of school being closed since March 16th, we have revisited some of the fees which we've charged parents and families for the services we would normally have been provided. And we are looking to get your approval to reimburse some of those fees at the, at certain levels. So I would like to go through those fees and what our recommendations are. As we looked at the fees, and I'm going to give you a little summary in a moment, but the things we were looking at, this is for things like athletics, kindergarten and so on. And we looked at the level of services being provided during the closure. We also looked at the proportion of the fee to reimburse, what that impact, these are just all things we had to think about then. What the impact would be on the district budget for FY '21 and '22. Not necessarily that would be a deciding factor, but just then we would have to consider what we would have to do to balance that out. And then also, and this may, in the end, prove to be the most tricky, the reimbursement process that we get the reimbursement back to the families and the people that paid. So our options for refunding people that we allowed to was a total refund for days remaining. So the time we closed school, there were 61 days left. So that's on the 180. I know things changed a little bit since then, but there were 61 days, normal days left, which is 33.9% of the school year. So in that, in that, in this presentation, a total refund is 33.9% of the annual fee, a partial refund or no refund at all. All right, so these, this is kind of a summary of everything that we looked at. So in this first column here, you have the name of the fee, you have then the annual amount, what our proposal is. And this are the things, we were, the rationale, what we were thinking about when we made this decision. So in athletics, this is kind of the most straightforward, I think. I can just cut to the chase. But we were proposing to refund 100% of the spring sports fee. No fun, no, no sport season took place. And no, we hadn't even got around to the, you know, really the sports night. So we hadn't collected all the fees yet. So it was only a handful of fees that we actually collected. So we're proposing just to refund parents those fees directly. And the kindergarten, the kindergarten tuition, so families pay $200 a year for their student to attend. I, I mean, the proposal here, but this is something I'd like to talk about, and maybe this isn't quite right, but to refund a percentage of that student fee of what was left, based on the fact that there is some remote learning happening under the, to minimize the impact on the FY '21 budget. Although that is something we can, may want to talk about. The preschool, there's $3,500 a year, and we're proposing to refund the full 33.9% of that. That's based on the number of days the school was closed for. And as, although the remote learning is taking place, and I know we have some very dedicated professionals doing everything they can to provide services virtually for those students, we do recognize that for the very young students, that can be more difficult. Transportation, this is, you know, $200 to $300 student, depending on when they paid, and there was a family cap. And again, we would propose to refund 33.9% of that fee, given that we are just not providing any busing at this stage. And then just to be clear, this is just for in-district, regular ed transportation, where people have paid for it. And then finally, and this is just for your information, we have a, also been just working with our food service director, Marilyn Harridan, about managing sums that were left on students' accounts. So throughout the year, students, you know, put money on their account to pay for food during the year. And if, this is really for seniors, because if you're, you know, if you're going to come back next year, then you can just continue to use those funds. So we'll just leave them there. But if you're a senior and you're leaving, then we either transfer the money to a sibling or we will refund the funds to the parent. And that's kind of, that's already started. So in terms of athletics, so for each of the fees, what I've tried to do is show you, the first is what our current forecast ending balance was going to be, this is really before the refund. So here with athletics, we thought we would end with $125,000, as is if we refund all the spring payments. That would be a total reimbursement of $3,200. So that would leave us with $122,000 in that account. And that coupled with the revenue we expect to get in FY '21, we'd be wanting more than enough to cover the budget offset that we had counted on for next year's budget. And still leave us with this last line at the bottom with the end balance for FY '21. We just want, so the reason I'm just showing that is because I want to be mindful of what the impact of that will be on FY '22's budget, because how much you have left at FY '21 will be really important. And so that we don't make an impact to following year's budget, because we rely on those funds to offset that year's budget. But you know, with, with that end balance and with the expected revenue we'd get in FY '21, and then in FY '22, to do that should be enough to continue the same level of budget offset. So I feel athletics, small amount, it seems fairly straightforward. So kindergarten is a little more complicated, as you can see by the fact I've added a column here to give you. I've added a column here, so there's two different scenarios. I'm not sure, not sure if either of these ones will be the right scenario in the end, but these are two I want to share with you. So again, we have the ending forecast, the current forecast ending balance before we do reimbursement. This is where we thought we'd be coming in $130,000. So the reimbursement is clearly a lot more money. This would be, so if we were to reimburse 33.9%, that's the full amount. That's what this scenario one is. That would be $98,000, minus $99,000. So after doing that, we would have $31,000 left at the end of this year, going into next year. So if you add that to our FY '21 revenue, you get only $331,000, and actually, we'd budget it for $350,000. So that would actually have an impact on our budget. Now, to break even, so that we don't have an impact on the budget, it's, it would be reimbursed just 28%. And that's the second scenario, so you'd reimburse 28% of the year. And so that would reimburse then $80,000. So that would leave us with 50 in the, in the bank at the end of the year. And then coupled with the money we'd, the revenue we'd expect next year, that would give us enough money going into, into the year. Now, as we'll talk about, we do look for, we are forecasting a slight, a surplus at the end of this year. So another option would be to use some of that surplus to offset this, these funds as well. So if we were going to go ahead with scenario one, then we might be able to offset the deficit with some of the money we have left in the operating budget at the moment.
Michael, I hate to ask a question.
No, don't. No worries.
We're working off $2,800 a year for kindergarten fee. Is, is that correct?
A...
I think it's
I know, I just saw that question as well. I'm just a, I got my numbers mixed up. Let me just double check. Sorry, just bear with me while I double check.
So I'll, I'll read the questions to the committee while you're checking. Lydia Stain on 401 Beechwood Street says kindergarten tuition was listed at $2,800, and my kindergarten invoice and payments reflect a fee of $3,500. I'm curious about the $2,800 listed.
I really hope that's not my mistake. I may have confused kindergarten.
So
Preschool.
I remember it being $3,500.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we voted, so.
Yeah, I'm still, that's very embarrassing. Hold on, let me, so if it's any consolation, so the, the actual percentages and the reimbursement was not based on individual rates, that was just based on the total revenue we brought in. So it does, so that is obviously that.
So
I didn't catch that either. I didn't catch it. Sorry.
This is really, I, I guess, a theoretical question.
Yeah.
You know, that we talked about at the last meeting, there is remote instruction There is remote instruction going on. But this is our only, you know, fee based program that they're paying for a full day.
So, 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 yes, I'm sorry, I just got the kindergarten, the preschool one, figures mixed up.
Okay.
And I was putting the slides together. So I'm sorry about that. As I say, so when I calculated the reimbursement, you know, how much a, let me just, if I go back to. If I get back to the slides. So when I calculated this amount, the reimbursement amount, that was based on the total revenue rather than what each individual person had paid.
Okay.
So, so although, although I had messed up that figure, that will actually not change the reimbursement amount, because I just just did. It'll change how much each individual person gets, but it doesn't change the overall amount, because that's what I did. Yeah, because I just looked at how much we brought in in total for that year and took thirty three point nine percent of it.
All right.
Ask a question while we're here. Sorry.
Yes.
Of course, please, please.
Um, also. Is based on the projected number of students who are.
Yes.
Lack of a better term, scheduled to start kindergarten. This is assuming all of their parents will send them in September, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I think, what are we, Michael, at a hundred and seventeen registration?
Yeah, just about, I think, yes. Yep.
So that's what, that's what the budget is built off of.
Yeah, although not all of those will be fee paying.
Right.
For one reason or another.
Okay. Any other questions on kindergarten?
So we're only technically obligated to do a half day program in kindergarten, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So there could be a very good chance that if school is. Looking a little different, some people might opt to just do the hot half day.
Yeah, or remember that to to what Ashley's point, I'm sure is that folks are not required to do kindergarten in the state of Massachusetts, that's first grade. So. You know, there is the option of keeping your kid home, and it's not illegal to do so, for lack of a better.
Yeah.
Phrasing.
But as Jennifer says, they could still enroll them for a half day.
Yeah, absolutely, Jennifer.
So if we're, if we're in remote learning at that point, then they may choose to do a half day, and then there'd be no charge.
There'd be no charge and there'd be no. Offset.
Exactly.
There'd be no three hundred thousand dollar offset. So. That would have to come out of the balance of the operating budget.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's why it's just a little, a little concerning to me to, I know this was the instruction that we gave to you at the last meeting, Michael, but it's just a little concerning going to. A zero balance, you know, negative is very concerning. And he said, well, what does it look like if it goes to zero? But just so everyone understands that if we have a shift in how many students opt for a full day, or. Or the state provides guidance that it's a half day, we can't necessarily charge for a half day of kindergarten.
Exactly.
But if it's, if. Would this have an effect on whether we hire a full time kindergarten teacher?
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess it could potentially, yeah. I mean, if you, it depends, because the. Hiring of the extra teacher was the pet was because of the the large amount of kids we would have. You know, far more than we would want in a kindergarten if we didn't hire that teacher based on enrollment numbers. So I would think it would, it would potentially impact that. Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to also make a comment. You know, I know kindergarten is, we're one of the only, we're the small percentage that actually charges for kindergarten. In the in the state, we're part of, I think it's fourteen percent actually charge for it. And I know that. We, it's definitely in our radar to, look, if we could supply it, we will. I just want to emphasize on the fact that kindergarten, the statistics are out there and how important it is for kids to go to kindergarten. So. I think that, you know, as someone who never went to kindergarten. But I would say that it is very important that we offer these services to folks, and we've got to make sure that. I just don't like, if somebody moved into the town and, you know, they hit up with the thirty five hundred dollar bill, which is basically another tax bill. For them, considering that other towns don't charge that. So it's, it's a real big hit for the small, the families just starting out. And, 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 you know, I know we've been advocating to get free kindergarten. And I know we don't charge for half day kindergarten. I just want to let, you know, just have it out there that we are going to take up the position of trying to get it funded. But I also wanted to make, make, make mention the fact that it is very important that we should be encouraging folks to go to kindergarten.
No question. Yeah, let me, let me reiterate that. An underscore what you just said, Paul, it's very important. For foundational perspectives to, you know, to to get kids ready. With kindergarten, you know, the obviously families have the right to make that decision, and I don't want to disparage anybody's decision if they think in a contrary way, but. And I'm a firm believer that it gives up that foundational skills. Besides, our kindergarten staff is second to none. They're amazing, and they will absolutely give your child a good foot forward. As they move into the class of public schools. So it's a, it's a great first experience for students in a school. So I could not underscore what you said enough, Paul, absolutely. So I didn't want that, me answering the direct questions to lose that message for sure. So thanks for reminding me.
All right, you want to go to the next one, Michael?
Sure. So. Transportation, that's. And some is almost straightforward in that we didn't provide any service, obviously, since school closed. So reimbursing that percentage would be forty three thousand dollars. That would leave us with a hundred and forty six at the end, four thousand dollars at the end of the year. And combined with the expected revenue, then we would have enough money to, you know, end the year and FY twenty one for a hundred thousand dollars. So that I was more comfortable with that one.
I, I, I just want to comment on that as well. We did pay the bus drivers too as well, correct?
Yeah, yes, we did.
And, 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 and we didn't furlough anybody in the school system, correct?
That's right, we did.
I gotta give a shout out to Cohasset for doing that. I, because we have a wonderful staff, and we have a lot, a lot of good, strong people that work for us, and I was glad to see that. Someone, someone had mentioned that, you know, that Cohasset should have been applying for the PPP money. The payroll protection plan. However, we didn't furlough anybody. So to answer the. To answer the question was that we wouldn't be getting any anyways, correct?
Yeah, and I don't think that, I did that, I would check, but I'm pretty sure. That did not apply to. Public organizations.
Yeah.
Just have small businesses as well. It would be. Was too big and too public.
Yeah, I think the comment was that Marshfield got it, and that's what somebody had said to me, and I had, that the answer that I was. I, that I thought, and I said, it was just clearly coming from me, was. That, that said, I thought it was just for businesses, but I also know that we didn't furlough anybody, including the lunch staff, and. I think that's, that's. Pretty cool of Cohasset to do that. I just think that, you know, in this, in this time of people just, you know, right away, oh, we got to cut, cut, cut without thinking. Is, and I'm proud to say that Cohasset didn't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. So I'm not sure if, I mean, maybe Marshall did, but I do know that there is a funding for schools through the CARES Act. To support a public organizations. But the challenges are facing with coronavirus and Cohasset is a, is eligible for these things, fifty three thousand dollars. And a grant from the federal government for, which is a process we're just going through right now.
Oh, good. Okay, great. So we are, we are, we are going to get some funding from the CARES Act, being in.
Yeah, yes.
Three thousand. Okay, great, great.
That's not, it's not the payroll protection part. It's something.
Okay, the CARES Act. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
There's a, a lot of, not a lot, but we heard today on the town leadership call about different. State and federal sources of funding. For expenses occur, you know, incurred due to COVID nineteen. So there, there is some, some funding. That will be flowing into the town. Um, personally, I'm okay, I'm okay with this. I think, you know, the year end balance is, is fine to get the year started. It, if nothing, it covers our lease obligation. For next year, and, and we truly aren't providing a service.
And then the last one was preschool. So the reimbursement there was seventeen thousand dollars. That would leave us with our ending balance for this year of sixty two thousand dollars. And, you know, we actually expect to bring in pretty much what we'll spend from this budget, this account. So we would be, you know, still in the same position at the end of FY twenty one. So that's a pretty decent place to be in.
So does anyone on the committee have, oh, I'm sorry, Michael, you have more?
No, I have, well, just one more slide, and then really. A, so the, the, this is just on the timeline and process. So refunds will all be done by check, which will go through the town. A accounts payable process. So they'll be on the warrant, you'll have to approve it, then it'll go to. The town accountant to issue the actual checks. We will, so it is going to take, I put in four weeks, that might end up being a little optimistic, because. We will have to, these are, you know, we're obviously going to have to cut hundreds of checks, which we don't normally have to do every week. So we will be entering all those people into our accounts, their pay, accounts payable systems, so we can issue their checks. So that is a process which has, we started already, and hopefully won't take too long. And the refunds, so will be done by activity type. So. Hopefully, we'll be able to combine those onto one check, but families may get more than one. So if they're enrolled in different, probably one for athletics and for. A transportation, you may end up getting more than one check. And then the last thing to point out is if a households have a negative balance, for example, if. They owe money for something else, like lost textbooks or. A for something else that's not being paid for to the school, then. Those balances, the, the refund will be applied to those negative balances before we make any reimbursement. And that will be made clear in the invoice or the, the information that goes back to families. So that's, it's finished. That's it. So really, I mean, I guess we're just looking for your approval of all of these reimbursements, but before we do that, just to decide. What level of reimbursement we should give to kindergarten, if we should give the full thirty three point nine percent. Or if we should give a lower amount.
It's a hard one.
Yeah, for sure.
It, it, it's a hard one, but it isn't, because we are providing. Instruction, there is some level of service. So if you look at transportation at thirty three point nine percent with zero service. Twenty eight percent is quite reasonable, considering there's a half day schedule of remote learning.
That's a good, that's a logical way to look. Yeah.
Anyone on the committee have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yep, go ahead.
Um. I have a couple of questions. So. We have provided some kind of remote learning. Okay. Have the kids, will the kids be receipt, getting a report card?
So just as we're doing with all of elementary, they're, they, they'll get a comment on their remote learning experience, and then they'll get some. Some notes about what they can work on and anticipate. Doing over the summer to be as prepared as they can for first grade. That's, that's, that was going to be our approach. So.
And will they, will there be some kind of record of attendance?
Well, no, because remember, attendance records are not, well, there won't be any record of attendance. You mean, what do you mean? That they, that they did attend kindergarten?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, remember, we did go through over, you know, a good, basically went through three quarters of the year. Or I should say, two thirds of the year. Two, yeah, sorry, two thirds of the year. So, yeah, they'll have record that they did go to kindergarten. Yep.
There's a reporting aspect to the teacher's role during this time.
So what do you mean, what do you mean, reporting aspect?
Sure, we'll be giving some kind of summary of.
Oh, yeah, yes. Basically, the same as we would receive with the other grades. They'll be receiving a summary, and they'll be, you know, receiver, receiving. Standards based information, just as they would with any grade in the elementary.
Um, and then Patrick, what are other districts doing? Do you know?
The, I don't have a chart that says all the districts that are, Michael might have more information that have a full day kindergarten, but. It was my understanding that they're basically considering just exactly what we are. Are they, are they going to refund? A whole, the whole thing? Are they going to refund a portion? I think everyone's trying to do something for them, but, you know, services are rendered just as they were here in those other schools as well. It's just not exactly the services that were anticipated by paying, you know. Customers for a full day kindergarten. It's a lot of different ways to look at it. So the short answer is, I'm not sure what everybody's doing. There's a lot of talk back and forth. With the towns around here. Michael, did you have any particular data?
Yeah, I mean, it's just what you said. So it is lots of districts are just in the process of making this decision now. Obviously, that, from what I can tell, the majority are making, or have decided to provide some reimbursement of some form, but it is. It is varied.
Yeah, most of them are trying to give something back.
So the thirty three percent is, that is strictly, okay, you weren't here for thirty three percent of the year, so we're going to refund you for each day. But the, but, but the twenty eight is. Might account for the work that the, might sort of help offset the work that the teachers have been doing. In a remote learning environment.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I guarantee that the kids are getting, are getting good guidance by the staff. The staff's amazing. So there's, there's no question they're getting something.
Absolutely. And also too, is, is, we should all note the fact that we haven't cut any programs. So. The teachers are still getting paid, correct?
Right.
Right.
Right. So again, this is something that, you know, we're still providing a service that we can't really provide, however, we're still paying the teachers. To do those services. So that said, it's a very difficult thing for the town to, to. But they still are getting some services. So I think this is a good compromise. You know, I gotta say, I'm proud to be on the committee that we brought this up. This is something that, you know, wasn't a big, like, everybody in town asking for it. It was more of us as a committee making sure we do the right thing. I gotta say, I'm proud to sit with you guys to do that.
So we, we do have a comment. There's no question on it, but I will read it. From Lydia St. Ange, Ange, four oh one Beechwood Street. I think it's important to consider if kids who are full day students had more instruction than half day students. In my experience. The interaction with kindergarten teachers has been great, but all students, half day or full day, have the same learning menu and the same time on Zoom each week. Full day students are not getting more time on learning in the distance learning model as they do at school. Exactly, that's, that's what we've been discussing, and that's why we're, we're looking at the reimbursement.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a good point, and that would, I would argue for given the full thirty three point nine percent reimbursement.
No, well, no, I don't think it would, because they're still getting a half day of instruction.
Yeah, but I think.
Thirty three point nine is a reimbursement of a full day of instruction. Right?
Michael, I believe.
Yeah, but I guess the point is that the half day kids who are not paying on are getting the same level of, as, same level of tuition.
Oh, and theirs is free.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know I should not be arguing that, but.
Well. Philosophically, I understand, and I don't disagree, but we do have a fiduciary responsibility and. And, and to go into FY twenty two, which by all accounts is going to be a much more challenging. Budget year. Than FY twenty one, it's tough to start off. You know, already in the negative, but.
I think the twenty eight percent is a, is a fair compromise, because they, it's not as if there has been. No instruction. no instruction or um, reporting from the teacher um, and attendance, so.
Michael, how many half day kindergarten kids do we have?
Eh, I believe it's four at the moment.
I was gonna say, it's only three or four.
Yeah, because I know that they go to four different parts of Cohasset, you know, in the buses.
Plus, yeah. So in order to, to expedite the lengthy process of the refund checks, you would like a vote tonight?
Eh, yes, ideally, that would be great.
Are there any other comments or questions from the committee?
Yes, I have, I have questions not related to kindergarten. Um, if, I have two questions. Um, could people choose to just not get the refund and apply the money for next year? That's question one, and question two is, can eh, people opt to just not get a refund?
So, eh, we did, so to do that, we did think about that, and the issue is, if you do that, then basically you don't offer any refund unless somebody requests, because, I mean, we would, we would, we would tell people, if you want a refund, please let us know, or let us know if you would like us to hold, you know, give the funds to, eh, keep the funds for the program. Eh, so, but eh, I, we just felt that the risk with that is that some people just wouldn't be aware of, just wouldn't hear about it, just wouldn't be aware, just wouldn't get around to telling us, and therefore they just, they wouldn't get the refund. Because I mean, I did, because, you know, and Steve Retunde suggested that, because some other, that's what some other districts have done. They've said, you know, given people, especially around athletics, they've said, would you like to receive the funds back? Or should, can we keep them for the program? And, you know, and they said, like, half, a third of the people have kept them for the program. So we did think of that, but the, the risk is just then, sorry, yeah, people don't, there's just.
I don't know. I mean, you, you could, you could put language in the cover letter to state that if people wanted to donate the refund back in whole or a portion, that, you, you know, they could just send the check back. But I, I don't, I don't know how you do a hybrid, I think either you have to issue them all or ask people. I, I think, I think it's, it's hard to, to say, well, you know, this one, Mrs. Smith wants to apply it forward and, but Mrs. Jones doesn't, I just think it's logistically very challenging.
Yeah, so basically, I think what districts do is they have an appli, application process, even like Google Form or something, so you fill in your details, what you would like to have to your, or you would like to have happen to any money you have, and wait for the eh, and wait for the, and then, and then, so we would then have a list of people who wanted a refund, and we would issue checks for them, and a list of people who did not want to refund, and a decision of what happened to those funds.
Think, I just think it's a lot cleaner just to return the checks. Because you gotta vote on the number, correct? I mean, you just, eh, otherwise you don't know the number that's gonna come out of the budget.
Right, right. Um, Ashley, any comments or questions?
Do you not have any comments or questions?
Do, um, I mean, we, we can, we can vote on, on this whole, or we can vote it item by item. Um, Michael, what would you prefer?
Eh, so I guess, which, which scenario, well, I guess it might be, it might be best if, to vote kindergarten first, since we're just so we know what we're doing on kindergarten, and then vote for everything else.
Okay. Okay, um.
Ellen, this is, this is a suggestion, this is Craig McClellan, I think we should probably do each item individually, so there's an individual vote as to each thing.
Okay, that, that's fine, that's fine with me. So shall we go to?
Obviously, it's sort of your call, I just, that's my suggestion, I think it might be good for like, the minutes and for the, for the record.
Yeah, I was, I was just trying to expedite through this, but I have no, no problem, I agree, it's the cleanest way to go, so um, so the first one, can I have a motion to approve the refund of thirty two hundred dollars to the families that paid for spring sports?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Craig McClellan.
Roll call, please.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Craig McClellan.
Thank you.
Eh, Ellen.
Yes.
So for the eh, for, I think that, I think that was fine, it's a small amount, but see, for the other ones, can we, can you approve the policy rather than the actual final amount, just in case there's a problem with the check or, you know, we will keep you, we will, you know, just like if a check bounces, and not bounces, but if we, because it's our, okay, but if somebody returns a check, we won't have reimbursed that full amount, and then.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, so um, I, I believe we're in agreement that it's scenario two, we feel is equitable. So can I have a motion to reimburse twenty eight percent of the annual kindergarten fee to full day kindergarten families?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I can.
All in favor, roll call.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Craig McClellan.
Thank you. Does that work for you, Michael?
Yep, that's awesome, thank you very much.
Okay, trans, transportation, um, so this would be thirty three point nine percent?
Yes.
Sixty one days?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve refund of our transportation fees of thirty three point nine percent of the fee accounting for sixty one days?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Paul, you got it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Craig McClellan.
And last one.
And the last one is preschool, okay, um, may I? Hmm.
Thirty three point nine percent again.
Okay, eh, may I have a motion to a pre, approve preschool tuition reimbursement in the amount of thirty three point nine percent?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Craig McClellan.
Excellent. Was that it?
That's it, thank you very much, so we will get those moving as quickly as possible.
So the, you know, the, the whole round number is about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars, that, that's a lot of money. Uh, it, it does reduce our projected ending balance um, to about two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars from five hundred and twenty six. So we'll just have to, you know, keep an eye on, on that as we move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda, under the section, is an update on where we are with the budget. So I believe, I can just share, I'll just share this summary, which I believe I have.
Monthly update, right?
Yeah, there's just a monthly update, so.
I have it, Michael, if you don't have it.
Yeah, you should be able to see it now, can you? So this just shows where we are up, we were up to the end of April thirtieth, and eh, actually, and there's, I know Ellen's already noticed, this actually does look like we spent more by this point than we had by the same time last year. But the reason for that is that we've had, we'd actually, we've actually paid more payrolls this year to the end of April than we had at the same point last year. So eh, normally, there's two payrolls a month, but we have two months a year that have three payrolls, just because of the way the dates land. And we'd have, we've had both of them by the end of April, and I think one of them was in May last year. So, you know, last year at this point, we had more payrolls to pay than we do at this point. So actually, when you then take, but if you take that into consideration, we're actually somewhere like seventy thousand dollars behind where we were at this point last year, and that's really because of eh, you know, supplies or, you know, we're, we're just spending less in a whole bunch of areas, par, partly because of coronavirus, and partly, well, mostly before, because of coronavirus, eh, a little bit because of some of the prepays we're made, able to do last year, and also in utilities, and that's kind of a combination of a couple of things, so heating is down from last year, as is eh, electricity, partly due to use in the building, I think, and partly because of some of the upgrades that the town facilities team have been making to our, the systems in the buildings to help improve efficiency, so all that, and eh, the money we continue to get back from the solar energy farm the town invested in, so all that is helping to keep our budget, we're kind of on track, a little bit better.
And does anyone have any questions? No.
So I had, so just as an aside on this report before, we, I did eh, which we don't normally do, we included some additional pages on this.
Yeah.
Which just show the expenditure on other, we don't, I mean, we don't normally show you this, because it's actually not super helpful, but it's just expenditure from the other eh, funds, like revolving accounts and grants, but it's quite a high level, and also it's only expenditure, it doesn't show any revenue, so it doesn't show a balance, it just shows how much you spend, which is why it's all negatives, just in case anybody is worried. So we have separate revenue, we have separate ledgers which show the revenue, and then this, the accounting system brings together the revenue and the expenditure and gives you the balance, but what's here is just expenditure. Eh.
So.
Any questions?
Michael, I have a question, then, is.
Yes.
On page four, is the four million eight hundred and twenty four thousand sixty three dollars, is that part of the five million, five point three million on page one? It's gotta be part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the total for the district, for those who can.
All right, thank you.
And then the other report was the revolving and grant report, eh, I mean, the big things that are still not, so I have been, still not received those eh, safer schools grant, which is frustrating, eh, I did speak to the, I was in touch with a grant, the, the department oversees this grant at, at the state level, and they said the funds are on their way, they're just coming very slowly, but hopefully that will be here soon and we'll fix, fix that. And then there is an IDA grant, so we have actually received some of these funds already, they just hadn't hit our books by the end of April, but that will resolve that negative, eh, otherwise, you know, all our revolving accounts.
Michael, can you make the screen a little bigger, as a possible?
Does that help?
Yep. Thank you.
Is there any questions on any of them?
No, do you want me to um, send a note to Senator O'Connor, say we haven't gotten this grant yet, because he was the one who was instrumental and.
No, that's okay, I'll just talk, I'll, I'll contact the state again, I mean, they've been very receptive so far, so.
Okay.
It might just be an administrative issue, definitely don't eh, eh, send up the, eh, I don't wanna do that yet. All right, so, and then that actually all leads us on nicely to the next item, which is our forecast for the end of the year, which again, I've done a couple of slides for. So this is kind of our forecast, where we were coming in for the end of the year. We have, and it's basically two big items here, really, that's other, eh, which includes um, eh, a bunch of small things, and also professional development, which is a bit behind where we were at this point last year, and just because we've not been able to spend, you know, not be able to complete all our professional development programs, there's a bit of a eh, eh, surplus there. But it's also, that's, that was about, I think that was, that was only about fifteen, twenty thousand dollars of it. There was eh, some money for maintenance which wasn't completed due to the coronavirus, although we have been able to do other projects on maintenance from capital and other funding, so that's helped to reduce costs there. And then special ed tuitions, because we got a bunch of prepays in last year with the surplus, we were able to prepay a lot of our special ed tuition, and eh, so that's helped to re, eh, leave a surplus at the end of this year. And, and then really, a text, I mean, materials and supplies, really, that's because we, you know, we missed a third of the year, and so we were, we would not require the same level of supplies that we normally would have throughout the year. You know, in the last three months, we'd have been spending that money down. And then the big one really is utilities, so as I, and I mentioned that earlier, heating and electricity eh, heating has gone down, that had actually gone up, but it's now come down a little bit, especially in the last couple of months. And eh, electricity naturally, as I've mentioned, due to some of the work the facilities department have done, but also the solar energy eh, investment the town made, and so, and if you may remember, that was another area where we were able to save money, we were going into next year's budget, and I were able to do a lot of the things we did in next year. So with that surplus, so eh, so right now, we're projecting a surplus of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's eh, that's, I think we were expecting slightly more than that at this point last year, but obviously, but last year, there'd been a big prepay of special ed year before, which had helped us out, but, so our next steps, we'll have some final bills or some important projects we still have to get done. Eh, we will be able to use some of these surplus funds to prepay special education tuition, which the district has a history of doing, and so that, what that means is, eh, so normally, under the law, we're not allowed to pay for services we're receiving next year using this year's funds. You can use it to pay for, you know, I men, and I mentioned, things that we'll receive this year but use next year, but you can't use it to pay for things which eh, you'll actually receive next year. There are a couple of exceptions to that, which are in eh, the mass general law, one of those is eh, payments to collaboratives, so if we're paying collaboratives, particularly for special ed tuition or transportation, we're able to prepay them, so we can use this year's funds to offset those costs for next year, and also tuition to, eh, district tuition at private eh, schools, we can pay for that as well. So we will, we would plan to do that, we would also, there's a couple of things which we add on our priority list, which if we're able to, would like to purchase those things, one of them is laptops for the art program. They are eh, due to upgrades and software and so on, they're now, the devices they have are obsolete, and they can't really use them anymore, for like, it's for, you know, Adobe creative programs, the laptops they have won't work with that anymore, so that's really becoming a program, a problem for their program, so we'd like to tackle that. Eh, and then some social studies and science textbooks, which had been requested, but had not made it onto our list, we'd like to purchase those as well, and then remaining funds could be used to pay into the sped stabilization fund.
Oh, do you have a, do you have a recommendation, Michael, on, on how much you wanna preface special education tuition? Or do you wanna wait another month?
Just because things are moving so fast at the moment, I'd like, can we wait to the next meeting maybe? Just because there's, with the fees, reimbursement and so on, I'd like to get all that buttoned down.
Yeah, we, we didn't vote on it until June the nineteenth last year.
All right, okay.
I, I have a question, Ellen, do we have to at town meeting know how much we're putting in the sped stabilization fund?
No, that's a special town meeting, that's a false, special town.
Thank you, yeah.
Is there any, Michael, is there any of this um, surplus that we could use for some of the capital items that we weren't given? Such as, um, and this is a concern as well, there's, there's a couple of things that were brought up, and one was the custo, adding the new custodian to bring us to the level of, of three versus five, which, you know, I think Dr. Sherwood brought that up, eh, Paul brought that up about cleanliness. Also too, is the eh, of the water stations, eh, the forty four thousand dollars for the water stations, because those are touchless, eh, you, you pretty much use the bottle, it's not, so there'd be less um, people using it by their hands, I guess. So it would be eh, something that, in my opinion too, it's a, it's necessity, like eh, access to clean water. So is there any way you could, um, because I know that was forty four thousand dollars short. I know the PTO came up with um, to, to fund maybe what, six of them or so, but there was still.
Three, it was three, one eh, each middle school, high school, and all's good.
Yeah, because if we could get all the water stations, the high, because, you know, it is, it is one of the essential things. Um, and I was thinking that maybe we could, you know, go ahead and, eh, to me, that would be the most important thing. I don't know, I'd like to hear from the other, other members, but water is just a huge, eh, you know, there's been studies after studies, if kids lack enough water, they're not gonna get eh, the, the education that we're, we're trying to give them, there's, there's. There's, there's dehydration, there's lack of fatigue, there's headaches, there's so many things attributed to lack of water. And especially in some of the schools, you just won't even drink out of the water fountains.
So I, I would be very concerned that we not put as much as we can in the sped stabilization fund. We've traditionally used this to put some money aside and given the fluctuations and unpredictability of sped costs, I I would feel better putting as much as we can into the sped stabilization fund. I know we're limited though, Michael, right? It's a percentage of our total budget.
Yeah.
No, we're at, I think I said 280,000 at advisory, it's like $273,000 is our balance. And you're allowed 2% of your actual net school spending, which would give us another $112,000 we could put into that fund to max it out. So, but I think, Michael, do you wanna go back and answer Paul's question if we can use surplus to fund capital projects?
So, well, so there was two parts of your question. The easy one unfortunately is the custodian. So we definitely cannot use the surplus to pay for custodian because that, you know, that would, we'd be receiving that service next year. So we can use this year's funds for it. As for the water fountains.
I ask just, is there a chance that we might be able to use some of the CARES funding to pay for a custodian?
Yeah, I think that is a possibility.
Paul, so that's a, that's a possibility as we have funding coming in for, for COVID-19 needs. Cleaning and a custodian could potentially be something we use that for. Just to put it, put it out there. I don't know. I've just, we were talking about that briefly today earlier. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Michael. Just wanted to get that out.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea, Patrick. The, so I mean, I think there is, there's nothing technically to stop us using money now to get those projects done. They, to get to, to do additional water fountains. I mean, it might be nice just from a sort of fiscally prudent perspective to do, maybe see do an additional fountain each school. So not doing another 11, but say doing four with the surplus funds. So you just make sure that, you know, just another ink step. And then we can use some of these funds to prepay special aid tuition or pay into the sped stabilization just to, I'm just anxious about what next year is gonna look like in terms of, you know, the impact of coronavirus and not just next year, but the year after. So things like, you know, like we were talking about, like if kindergarten, if nobody enrolls, if people start pulling their kids out of kindergarten, then that's gonna leave a pretty sizable hole in the budget. If, you know, if somebody have to do additional bus runs, then that's gonna be, have an impact on our transportation costs. So anything we can do to help of, you know, prepare for the great, the unknown, I think would be great.
I, I agree with John. I, I think the the laptops for art and textbooks are kind of no brainers. I mean, we're in the business of educating kids and we're allowed to do that. I think, I think we'd have to navigate the capital expenditure because they haven't changed the rules of a capital budget committee yet. I know Chris Senior is looking to raise that threshold in which capital budget gets involved. We, we would just have to figure that out if that's out of all the priorities that were on the list, if that's the one the committee feels you know, passionate about. The other thing on that, Paul, is that as they mentioned during our capital budget presentation, the, there will be $2 million in, at special town meeting in the fall to revisit these programs. So these requests that weren't honored, they were just taking a very conservative approach to it. So in the event that, you know, we're still in some remote learning model, that kind of alleviates that need a little bit and we will go back to our list for, for special town meeting.
Yeah, a lot of those concerns can probably be, Patrick, you're starting a new committee based on the, with the wellness committee to try to dive into some of those concerns about the wellness of kids. And that would, for me, that would be probably the place to bring that up about how important water is to kids learning. I mean, there's so many studies out there that are, that associate with that. So maybe, maybe that we bring it up there and try to see if it's a valid point to maybe go back to the next meeting and say, because look, you got some really good laptops for art, social studies, textbooks. I see all that. I just think that if I could be granted the time to try to send around some studies that show how important, you know, water is, 71% of the body is made up of water. I mean, basically if people wanna lose weight, just drink water. It sounds crazy. But it's, it's a huge importance and the, the idea that our kids don't have access to that, you know, I mean, I could say it all the time. They're in the middle school. They're like, they can't, the, the water fountain is broken by the gym. They have to go from the middle school and walk all the way to the high school to get water. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's really unacceptable. I mean, it's something that, you know, I think that we need to do before we open the school doors. And also too, as we talked about the wellness committee too, is, is I'd like to, if we could work together to try to change the environment with the lunchroom. Seeing that it's, it's blue, you know, blue suppresses the diet versus yellow brings the diet out. I mean, it's, and we have an opportunity there to also put two, two lunchrooms, one to, you know, as Ellen mentioned before, we're trying to keep kids more, special needs kids in district. And that might be an opportunity to, to change the lunchroom away. So it's a little bit more social and emotional. So maybe that we go back to the wellness committee and we try to convince them there to maybe bring it up to the school committee. Is that our right to have a plan, Ellen, I guess?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So let's just finish up on, on this topic because that is not, not part of this agenda. So the other comment, and Michael, I wanna say this properly. So if I misspeak, please, you know, shout out at me. We have historic, the school district has historically given back surplus at the end of the year after we've allocated funding to the things that we're allowed to use surplus for, including sped stabilization fund. And I asked Don Pyatt if this year in particular, it would be better for the schools to do more of the purchasing and the prepaying than before. And what he said was, if it comes back to us as free cash, we can then allocate that to items that we spend that we have operational money and such as post employment benefits. And therefore that frees up operational town budget in the event that there's another passive budgets for FY21. So it kind of shores up where we are now. And I hope I stated that correctly, Michael, from our meeting with Don.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so, I mean, rudimentary, but basically any money that goes back to the town goes, is off, is free cash. So that means that it gets certified by their accountants as free cash or the auditor. And then the state, the town can use it. And in the past, they've used it just for the things you suggested like COPEB and for capital, they use it for capital, smaller capital projects. And so on, like that's what we were able to use, I believe, some of the funding that we received in the fall town meeting for like the 7D van and the middle school entrance. That was from free cash, I believe. So, you know, I mean, we're all one, essentially it's all part of one pie, like we're part of the town. So if we get money back to the town, that still benefits us in the long run.
Right. Okay, so next, next month, well, you'll have this dolared out and we'll look at, you know, we'll make decisions.
Okay, perfect.
Anyone else have any questions? Nope, okay.
Just have one last point, eh, Ellen, which is about the food service at the high school. So we have got a couple of quotes to do, to improve some of the lighting in the food service cafeteria and to do the painting. We haven't got, I don't know what color it was we were looking at, so I will check on that, Paul. Make sure they're doing yellow. And they.
You know, that's why, I, I, I don't like to bring up the word McDonald's, but they do that for a reason.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't wanna suppress the diet. You wanna kinda get, you know, and, and to our point is 30% of the kids are actually enjoying the food services or whatever they're doing. And there's an opportunity there of 70% to try to, to try to get more kids to enjoy the lunch at school, especially a hot lunch. And I, I think that's kind of the goal. I know as we, as we, small point, but as we looked at that mural, that, that mural is, is really important to the staff. They worked really hard to create that, but I think we could incorporate something around the mural that would bring the, I think lighting that mural would do a lot too.
Yeah.
Lighting, but I just wanted to mention that, Michael, as we think about painting, small point.
Yeah, we were not going to paint, we were definitely not going to paint over the mural.
Good.
There's a lot of positive, yeah, a lot of positivity comments about that. We just, so it's just, it's not quite started yet because any capital, because, so this would qualify as a capital expenditure under the state's guidelines for the food service program, and that has to be approved by the state before we do it. So that's just with them for approval right now. And then hopefully, and it's just a little bit tougher this year because we're actually, although we are running, we are running at a loss this year because we missed a third of our revenue. So, eh, but overall the, the food service count does have a balance. So that's how we're able to still do those projects.
We were also talking about putting the TVs in to try to promote the daily menus as well. Is that still on the table?
That's the second phase. So the first phase is to get the lighting and the painting done and then we'll be aware of the funds for the ATVs and better communication and presentation.
Maybe we could take this subject to finance and facility committee at some point because it's, it's not on the agenda. And we do have other options to go through.
All right, sorry.
But no, that's all right. Um, okay, so no other questions on, on process or anything. Okay. All right. So next is our school committee comment and communication. And the first item is the RFP for legal counsel. And Ashley's done some work on this, so I'll let her present.
All right, sorry. Let me just get this up here on my screen. So as we've discussed, we are going to begin the process of interviewing firms for our legal representation. And I took the liberty of putting together a proposed outline and timeline. I think the first thing we need to do is figure out who on the committee will be, whether it's all of us or a couple of us that will bring a recommendation to the full committee. We should confirm, I would like to confirm tonight who will be participating in that process in the search committee. I think that we can compile a list of priorities that we want to identify in our legal representation within the next week, as well as confirm a rubric for evaluation. And we have been compiling lists of firms or a list of firms, I should say. So we have a pretty good start on that, but if anyone wants to add any to the list, we also would ask, or I would ask if we agree to this timeline that we do that in the next week as well. The proposed time to line up interviews with the interested firms who respond with a letter of intent would be sometime between June 8th and 12th. I think we can conduct interviews between the 22nd and July 3rd. And we can make a decision about two finalists by July 15th. And then the hope is that we would select a firm and vote to approve on either the 29th of July or the 5th of August. I, we just don't have the, the calendar finalized as far as I know about the summer school committee dates. So I would, we would need to confirm the date after that's finalized, I think. Anyone have any questions, thoughts?
First of all, Ashley, thank you for taking the lead on this. And I, I'm available to help, anything I can do to help. I think it's a great idea to have some, at least a timetable that goes through it and it, and it's well thought of and I, I, I feel good about it. Like I said, I, I think it could be, everybody should have an input on it. And I think that's important to do that, that every member kinda makes sure that they feel comfortable with the firm. So I would think that we should probably do it as, as a, as a whole to try to, you know, what do you think of these firms? And, you know, people gonna have their own way of thinking there. I mean, I, I just think it's an opportunity for all of us that we should be able to meet with the firm before we just hire them.
Yeah, so I, I can, I can see that. I also can, after having participated in the process for interviewing director of student services candidates, while I was grateful to have the opportunity and I really enjoyed the process. It's long and it's, it's asking a lot of people's schedules. And so I would also certainly understand if the entire committee didn't wanna participate in the full process and wanted to wait until two finalists are interviewed by the whole committee. And obviously, Dr. Sullivan, if you wanted to participate in the whole thing, that would be fine too, but I mean, your list seems kind of long right now too, so.
It, you know, it's at the, whatever the request of the committee is, you know, in terms of me being on it, I would be glad to, but I certainly, you know, I, I recognize my role in this.
Yeah. So my suggestion is that we ask each member of the committee now if they would like to be part of the initial process or if they would like to simply meet the two final firms. I obviously will be involved in the entire process.
Well, there's really, the way I read this, perhaps three elements to the full process. There's, there's the legwork of priorities, there's the rubric for evaluation, and then there's, you know, the list of firms. And, and then it's picking out the five and then it's final interview. I think what I would find interesting is if the committee members, and I would, I would include Dr. Sullivan, I would include Michael and Leslie for their input because as I've stated many times, you know, the superintendent legal counsel relationship is at times more paramount to that of the school committee because of the day to day needs of the district and, and questions and whatnot. So in terms of list of priorities, that might be a committee exercise on a survey you sent out and then just compiled it. I mean, it's seven of us. It shouldn't take a lot, a long time to compile that. And then rubrics. Yeah, that, that, that's my, that's my only comment on that, on priorities.
Yeah, I'd be glad to be involved in any way, you know, the team wants me to be for sure. And I agree with you, Ellen. It, I mean, I don't know, I, which is more valuable, but I certainly, my, my day to day interactions with the council are plentiful at times. So, yeah, what have I can do?
Ashley, thanks for taking the lead on this. I, I'll, I'll assist in any way. If you want me to be involved in the early stages of it. Given my professional background, I'm, I'm happy to do that. But, but I too know how lengthy the process can be, having been part of Susan's selection. So I'm not, you know, it's not like I'm chomping at the bit. But, but I, I am more than willing to do it. I mean, I recognize that I'm, I'm a member of the committee and I recognize that I'm also an attorney. So my input could be relevant and it could be also unwelcomed. So whatever. So I guess it depends on how, I'm surprised Paul isn't, isn't, Paul should be chomping at the bit to be on this because this is, this is, this is one of his.
Paul's on this whole thing, yep.
Okay, all right.
Let me just, you know, clarify a point of order. The, we don't have a subcommittee for this, so two people can meet independently without posting and, and discuss anything along the way. When three people meet on this, even though it's not a subcommittee, that's a quorum of the committee and has to be a posted meeting. So I just, you know, you're looking for volunteers. I just want everyone to be cognizant of, even though it's not a bona fide subcommittee, a meeting of three is. even though it's not a bona fide subcommittee, a meeting of three is a quorum and needs to be posted.
Certainly, Ellen, I think, what would you, I mean, do you have a preference? I mean, you seem, do you have a suggestion on how to do it? I mean, how many members do you think should be involved in the early phases? Do you think it's more valuable to only have two or what?
Sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
I don't really have a point of view. I was going to recommend, Ashley, that you contact Liza O'Reilly from Hingham. She's on the Hingham School Committee, and they just went through this process last year. So she might be able to give you some insight on what they did. You might not have to reinvent the wheel. I've talked to her on a handful of occasions where we've had, you know, cross interests. And I found her to be very open and receptive and willing to share what they, you know, what they did.
I'm in sort of an odd situation because I'm straddling this timeline where you're going to have a new member. So it's, 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 in essence, cutting me out, which is fine because, you know, it'll be a new committee soon. I just have a question. I think when we did this last, I wouldn't mind having a couple more finalists. So we could have maybe at least three. Why do we have to limit it to two?
We don't. That's good input.
Maybe I can make a suggestion. I would be honored to work with you, Ashley, on this. And then maybe we can bring the, as you know, we, could we consult with Craig at all, Ellen? Or is it, that would be a meeting in a second.
Three is a quorum and a deliberation, so.
You need two of us to, and look, I'll do it. Craig, you did the last one with, and yeah, I guess, you know, I don't mind. I'd like to work with Ashley on this, so I guess that's fine.
But we're also going to include leadership, right? That would be Dr. Scollins and Dr. Sullivan, right? Because in our policies, it's pretty clear that the superintendent really has the, probably more of a relationship with counsel. So I really think it is very important that leadership be involved. And I'm trying to remember the last time we did this. Would it make sense to have the Director of Student Services on the committee as well? Or is that because we have separate legal?
We have separate legal representation, right?
Yes, we do, separate legal. And I don't believe that the, I don't believe the school committee hires the representation for this, the special education.
We don't, we don't.
I'd be glad to, be glad to join you guys, not a problem.
Should we also have the, I'm sorry, the finance, the Director of Finance is also on the committee as well?
I think she should be. I mean, coming from another district, she might have a lot of insight. We're all kind of insular in our own experiences and coming, you know, she might have perspective. She might know some of these firms. She might be able to make other recommendations for firms that this group has not come up with. So I think it's important.
I think she jumped off of the meeting. I think she's here anymore. She was here. Yeah, it's just important to remember she isn't officially on staff yet until, you know, July first. But yes, I think it would be lovely to have the input of Dr. Scollins and Susan. And I would, I'll certainly be there, of course, if the committee would like us to. So yeah, I think that'd be a great team.
Do we have a date on her start, a start date?
July first.
July first.
Michael could be, I mean, obviously, we, Michael, we, I have full trust in Michael, too. But I mean, it's, he's kind of in your position, Jennifer.
Well, that's why I'm wondering whether we should, you know, to me, it's just really important to to have the people that are going to have the working relationship with counsel be involved. So maybe it makes sense to just, we can take this schedule and just push it out a couple of weeks to get maybe Susan involved as well, or it's just.
Susan is on the call. I mean, Susan has also been very willing to help out with things like this. So I don't want to speak for her, but, you know, I could talk to her offline about a way we could make this work. I agree. I think having her voice would be hugely important in this, as it would for Leslie. This, Susan's come back. She's texting me here on the left, just so you know. She's on the, on the way back and probably doesn't know what we're talking, Susan, we've been talking about legal counsel and we have an RFP and doing a process. And we'd love you to be involved, but I don't want to put you on the spot. I can talk to you offline.
No, that's okay. I didn't leave. I must have got bumped off. I did hear you guys. I heard you talking about me, even though you couldn't see me. Whatever you need me to do, I'm in.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you. So that would be, to your point, Jennifer, I agree with you. And I think having Dr. Scollins, Susan and I on the team would be, would be great. And I think it would be a lovely pairing with Paul and Ashley if we had that as the team.
And it might give the new committee person some input as well, so.
Whatever you, whatever.
Whoever the newly elected person is.
Yep. So I don't know who speaks now. We're in silence.
Yeah, we are, we're in silence. I didn't, I didn't know if Ashley had anything left to.
I'm just writing down what we're talking about so that I don't forget any of it.
Do we, do we need to vote on this, Ellen?
We already voted.
Right.
We already voted. So I don't think this is, I don't think this necessitates a vote because it's a process. It's not a, it's not an action. I would just ask, you know, Paul and Ashley to, when you, when you schedule your meetings, be sensitive to Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins' time. Dr. Sullivan will be onboarding not only Susan, but Barbara as well during this time period, as well as developing a back to school, remote learning, part time learning, whatever it is. It's, 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 you know, we're coming up on summer, but it's, it's not going to be a slow time for a central office. So that's why I had an initial reservation about launching this now. And I understand certain members' position about, you know, delay, delay. But, you know, it's, I do have a sensitivity to the needs and requirements of our central office staff. And that this is so important, the relationship between counsel and superintendent is of the utmost importance. And I can tell you that, having lived with three superintendents. So that's all I'm going to say on that.
Well, thank you for letting me be involved and the leadership team be involved with this. I, that's appreciated, appreciated for sure. Because I do agree with Ellen, it is important.
All right. So you would just, the only thing I think the whole committee can respond to, and it's not a deliberation, is a survey. So Ashley, if you wanted to craft a survey of priorities of, you know, what each individual member, and I would, I would include Michael, I would include Leslie, Patrick, Susan. She has a perspective from her district that, you know, could add great insight. I think that will help get you start on shaping, you know, what you're looking for.
And yeah, Ellen, for the record, who is the school committee member in Hingham again that you spoke of?
Liza O'Reilly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other comment on this? No? So now we can move on to reports from subcommittee and liaisons. Do we have any? Jen, I'll start with you.
Sorry, Ellen. I'm sorry, I don't want to beat a dead horse. But so are we going to follow this, this timeline? And are we going to amend it so that the leadership is involved? Sorry, I hate to, I'm just looking at this document and I'm thinking, do we need to put some new language in there? I just don't want people to proceed thinking that, you know, I don't know.
I don't, honestly, Jen, I don't think there's an appetite to delay it. And I think that Susan has, has offered to participate prior to her official start date. So Barbara would be the only one from leadership that wouldn't be able to participate.
So in just in action, item number one, can we just, Ashley, could you just add the leadership in there? So we, that'd be great.
Yep.
And then maybe change it from two finalists to, geez, I mean, I'd like four, but I don't know, I'll defer.
You might see what, you know, how strong your feelings are about the candidates. Could be more, could be two, could be four, depending on.
Could we put a range two to four, Ashley?
I mean, does it matter what that document says? Does it, does it matter? I mean, isn't it just sort of a guide? I mean, we're not voting on anything, right? I mean.
When we've done search committees, we kind of do stick to kind of a schedule, just so people know. Sorry, Ellen, I interrupted you.
No, 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 I think, I think it's important that the document is correct so that, so that we don't have, again, with changeover in school committee, changeover in leadership, so that we don't have any misunderstandings on exactly what we discussed. So it's only amending two bullet points, number one and number eight. So I don't, I don't think it's that big of a deal. So any further conversation on this?
No.
No, okay. Any reports from subcommittees?
Yes, I had a Zoom call and did a school council via Zoom. Principal Sullivan gave a summary of remote learning. In general, people feel very, very happy about remote learning. She gave an update on the new configuration of the classes. There will be that, and Dr. Sullivan, maybe you can help me out here. There'll be sort of self-contained classes next year. We have had children switching between two teachers for different subjects. But next year, it'll all be self-contained classrooms. So that's a little bit of a change. And she presented that we're planning to go forward with the new math curriculum, which is exciting. And in our budget, we got the ESP point four that will support math, which is really exciting. And she also, which I'm sure all the parents in the district are aware, has set a schedule for pickup. I have to say, I was very impressed in that it's extremely organized. And I have my window and time that I'm going. And I would like to shout out to Karen Johnston, who hunted down paper bags from the Norwell Stop and Shop, which is, she got 500 paper bags, which is going to help with the process. So that's great. And then I also went to, I did listen to the, the Alternative Energy Committee's presentation in their meeting. After advisory, I didn't, I wasn't able to make the whole meeting. But I was able to listen to Tanya present her PowerPoint presentation on the microgrid, which was really interesting. And we all learned a little bit more about that. And that's my reports for the week.
Great, thank you. Ashley, any reports?
None, no.
None, Paul?
Yes, today was Wednesday. We all got to discuss the wellness of the children. And it was a great group, a very appreciative group of not only missing, to hear the teachers that are missing the kids. And it's just a good, it's a good group. I'm real excited to be part of it. Dr. Sullivan, I'd like you to, you know, kind of add a little to that because it was a really good group and it has a strong agenda as well.
Yeah, I'd actually defer to Dr. Scollins, if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have.
No, it's fine. It's, I was there, too. But it's more Dr. Scollins' leadership on it.
Great, thanks. Yeah, so we, we had met in the past and, of course, then remote learning got a little bit of a curtailment on our meetings. But to, we got together and, you know, checked in, how are the kids, how are staff, how are families? What are some things that we, you know, like to see for them moving forward? And also, we are looking at our wellness plan and our policy. Nurse Judy Collins took a course, so she has all sorts of resources for us. So we're now going to use the evaluation tool that was recommended. And the committee is going to use that tool to look at our current wellness policy, evaluate it based on, you know, the whole, our whole policy, but also everyone to focus on their particular area and to look at the strengths and weaknesses that exist within the plan. We're going to come back that first week of June. We're settling a date. I think we almost have one. I'm just waiting to hear from everyone, where we'll be looking at what our evaluation looks like. And we'll move forward with that, you know, over the summer and into next year. And as we move forward, too, we'll be looking to have a student on the committee, which will be really nice, which I didn't know. So I was glad that Nurse Collins told us about that. So that's where we are at.
And I would, I would add to that, that, you know, this team, as well as our social emotional steering team and our safe schools team, really have to consider the impact that this COVID-19 situation has had on students and how that will impact them coming into the building next year. You know, we have a social emotional learning plan, long, long range plan. And it absolutely has to be adjusted and incorporated to consider that. And we have to focus on how we're going to support students coming in this new normal and then also focus on our staff as well. So, and then reaching out to help families. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, but I echo Paul's sentiments that this is a great team. And we'll move, we'll move it forward to help the kids, that's for sure.
Okay, great. Anything else, Paul?
No, that's good.
Okay, Craig, any reports?
No report.
Okay, I'll be brief. I attended the PEB committee. They're making preparations to appear before the Board of Selectmen with their policy statement. And they didn't have a quorum, so the meeting was suspended. So that was probably the shortest Zoom meeting I've participated in. Today was our weekly leadership meeting with Chris Senior, Patrick, I don't even know, Bobby Sylvia, Glenn Pratt, myself. I'm sorry?
No, I was just going to help you with it, just.
Yeah, 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 I've got all these initials and I forget who people are. You know, talking about phase one this week and then what next week is going to look like. And I forwarded two documents or two emails to the committee. One is the PowerPoint presentation on the opening, you know, the gradual opening that was presented to the Board of Selectmen last night. And then the second was a link from Fire Chief Bob Sylvia that came from the state in terms of COVID-19 and the state phases. And the cover page, when you click on the link, the cover page has all the topics on it. If you were interested, say, in recreation, how, what does that look like? And then you can, you can navigate through. So if you're interested. But I just wanted to make sure I forwarded that along to you. First phase does have athletic fields and courts. And it is as opening, or maybe it's the second phase. I don't have that document open. Anyway, we were requested, this is a topic, actually, I gotta save that till the end. And the number Cohasset will be receiving money from the COVID Cares Act to, you know, support expenditures from the March to December 2020 period, whether it's for personnel, equipment, or supplies, and a plan needs to be filed by the fifth of June. Complicating it, though, is a mathematical equation that I, I don't know. Complicating it though, is a mathematical equation that I, I don't know relating to any grants from FEMA. So we'll let Don Pyatt and Chris Senior figure that out. The beach will be opening on Friday. It'll be open till 6:00 PM from the previous one o'clock closure. And they're working on plans to keep people socially distanced. I believe guidance from the state said, you know, in a group six feet apart and group to group need to be 12 feet apart. So whether it's limiting parking, parking or just, you know, providing gentle remind, reminders to people congregating on the beach, on Sandy Beach, which is open, but the parking lot will be open. So, um, that, that was that. Patrick, did I miss anything substantial?
No, I think you hit it right on.
Okay, so, um, we don't have any approval of minutes. We don't have follow-up and updates. So topic not reasonably anticipated. So, uh, in this reopening plan, the town voted to open the athletic fields and courts that are under the town's purview. There are two that are under, three that are under school committee, the school purview, Alumni Field, Lillard Field, which is the field behind the middle high school, as well as the Deer Hill Field. So we were requested to make a vote authorizing those fields to be opened. There's no responsibility for the schools to manage or monitor or desegregate groups that aren't complying. The police department will have additional patrols and Greg Taylor has been assigned to really navigate these areas as they open up and, and work with the kids so that the kids really understand, you know, 10 kid, 10 people or less, family members only. You know, and what they're allowed to do. So is there any conversation or discussion on that?
So moved.
I haven't made the motion yet. So there's no conversation? Okay, so can I have a motion to open Alumni Field, Lillard Field and the Deer Hill Field to recreation and compliance with the town's phased reopening?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second. Craig McClellan.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Colery.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Craig or Jen?
So this is phase three. There are other town, the other fields are open. I, I can't say that I'm thrilled about opening them, but if the other town fields are open, I guess it makes sense to have the action be unified. I hope that people will behave responsibly.
Jen, you don't have to vote. We don't feel, I mean, it's your vote. Don't feel like you have to fall in line with everyone else.
Yeah, you can vote however you want.
So I guess I abstain. I, I, well, no, I guess I vote now.
Okay. Craig?
Aye, Craig McClellan.
Okay, thank you. I will let them know. And one, one more point of business is, Patrick and I have, have talked about these meetings and in, in some respects, even from the comfort of our homes, I tend to find them a bit more arduous than being in person. And if you noticed, we took a couple of things off the agenda this week. It just distributed the materials to you for your review, such as the hiring update and the bus maintenance log. Because they require no action. And if we continue on in this venue, I'd just like people's input on continuing on that practice, using some, some discretion with me until, you know, the, until the next election and then with the next chair in terms of setting up the agendas and utilizing email distribution for non-essential reports, uh, so that our meetings can be a bit more concise. I actually gave a thumbs up to Zen. And you don't, you don't have to decide on it now. You can think about it. You can, you can go through like the kinds of things that are, go, go through, you know, our annual calendar. What do we have coming up in June that, that we can just, you know, send out on email? What you can do, so say you got the bus maintenance log. If you had a question on it, you can, as an individual, email Michael and ask him for point of information. It just can't be a reply all and then have a dialogue go back and forth. So, um, that's, that's the caveat. But, um, I, I think our leadership team is, is in Zoom all day long. This is my second Zoom. The first one today was quite lengthy. It, I find it, I find it a bit challenging. We'll also be looking at, at the next meeting, the, um, calendar of school committee meetings next year. And again, tradition is first and third Wednesday of every month, you know, some shifting for vacation weeks, but that's, that's not the law. So the, the meetings can, can be however we want them to be structured. You know, more meetings, shorter duration, meetings that are more topical. But you have to just remember then the commitment we're asking our leadership team to, uh, make during the evening. So I just wanted to put it out there. It's late, so people can think about it. If you have feedback, you can send it, you can email me if you wish. Otherwise, if there's no feedback, um, we'll just do things the way we've been doing them. Okay. So anybody have anything else?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is the leadership considering doing any other surveys of families?
In terms of remote learning?
Yeah. And return to school?
Yeah, well, the return to school surveys, I think would be premature until we have a sense of what we're doing. But I think that could be a good part of, um, kind of those committees and, uh, advising the steering team. But I do think we need to know what the 85% is going to be. I'm open for ideas, but that was my main thought there. The other, as far as remote learning, there are some districts that are doing follow-up surveys on remote learning. We could absolutely consider that. We don't have a lot of time left. So typically surveys, you know, would inform our practice. They certainly could inform our practice moving forward into the fall if we had to do remote learning. So with that, with that in mind, I think it'd be a good idea. What, what were you thinking, Ashley?
So the reason I ask is because I felt like, so for me, in the first survey, there wasn't, I, I feel like there is a difference between families that have, I'll just, I don't, I don't know. I apologize. I don't know the correct terminology, but I will say who have more traditionally traditional learners at home versus students who are in need of a little more assistance in school, right? And, and I feel like there, I, I, so I have a traditionally learning child and I feel like if there may be a difference between my experience and that of someone who's trying to help their student who usually has a little more assistance in, um, in what that experience looks like for them, having their kids, being the ones responsible for helping their kids access this information. And I feel like there, so I wasn't sure if there was any sort of inclination to be able to measure what that difference is. I did look on another school district's website and did see that they, they specifically asked families if their, their student or one of their students is on an IEP or has a 504. And, and I think that would be very useful because I think there's, like I said, just a different experience happening in homes. Based on that specifically. And I also would be interested to know whether families are, like, I mean, at this point, we don't know what the fall looks like, right? And we're waiting on that 85% that you mentioned from the commissioner. But I think it's valuable to know if families are scared about school starting and their kids going back to school, or if they're excited that they're going to get their kids back to a school building. And if they are sending their kids to school, do they plan to use school buses? Or do they plan not? I think there's just information that we can gather at this point. And I feel like if we wait and try and do something over the summer, it will be less likely to be sort of a focus for families. Because even though obviously this summer will look different than others perhaps, I think people are still going to try to enjoy the summer as best they can.
Yeah, those are really thoughtful comments. What I'll do is, let me discuss that with the leadership team. You know, I'd be glad to talk with you more about it too, Ashley, but just to get a thought from them, uh, we had, we had absolutely, you know, I mean, under my, my kind of umbrella of, of setting up these committees and gaining, it's all about gaining input. So the spirit of it is absolutely, it's, it's more of a timing for me. I hear what you're saying totally. And to be honest with you, until this morning, I would have said, yeah, but this morning, when the commissioner said, you know, pump the brakes a little bit, we're going to give you 85% of the information. When I got that information, it did cause me to pause a bit in my thinking about getting, because I want to get useful information. I don't want to over survey people to death. And I'm, I'm thinking that there might be some information in the 85% that I do have to ask on. But, um, no, we're right in the same spirit. I, I feel the same way. And I, I've also thought about doing another survey for remote learning. I just hadn't fully processed what that would gain us right now if the approach in the fall is going to be much different. If it's going to be similar, then, you know, we, we might need that. The commissioner also was asked about if we have to do remote learning in the fall. Are his, or his guidelines going to be any different? And right now they aren't. So that, that's another consideration too. Remember, we're following, uh, that guidance. So, um, I will bring it up with the leadership team. You have my word on it and I will keep you informed on that. And I do realize there's a timing thing. Jennifer, I see your hand. I know the.
I'm just, I, I'm like so intrigued at this 85%, like, what is the 15% that we control? Like, I'm just like, where did they arrive at 85%?
It's 85, it's, it's about 85%. So, um, that, that's the actual statistic that I was given.
And you have no idea what, what that represents?
Nope.
Okay.
Feel my frustration right there. Believe me. We're, I'm, we're urging, urging advice to come to us, but like I, I think I mentioned to some of you, I was on a call with, uh, Dr. Scollins, was on the same call through Niasse, and we watched leaders from Denmark, from, um, South Korea, from Germany, who have already started schools. A couple of them were international schools. And what was, I would say, resoundingly consistent about all of their approaches, but that is that they were following exactly what the health organization of their countries told them to do. So all the gray area would say, well, what's going on with sports? Oh, the, the health organization told us this. How did you determine that you'll have, you know, you'd have these areas where kids wore masks and these areas they didn't? The health organization told us this. So that guidance, you know, I think is very important for educators. We're not health officials. So we do need that guidance. So I respect that they're giving us up to, as arbitrary as the number is, Jennifer, 85% of guidance. So I, I'm anxiously awaiting it. But I don't, I also, you know, I, I want everyone to know that, and, you know, you, those who, who know me realize that I do gather a lot of information before I make decisions. And I, I certainly want to do that throughout this process. So thank you, Ashley.
All right. And any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn at 9:53 PM? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Jen, madam.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Colery.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Craig McClellan.
Thank you. Our next meeting is June 3rd. See you then.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.